And you submit to us. And we're going to start this evening with fire mitigation update and Chuck. It's all yours.
All right, good evening. Chuck Sirsoley, Fire Chief. I saw on a work session that you wanted to hear about wildfire mitigation. So without any kind of further direction, I surmise that was an update about what we're doing within the community. Julie, I heard a lot of it today.
I'll just connect you if you say something.
Tonight. So really, this is going to be an informational time. And I'm expecting about 15 minutes and then whatever questions we have after that. So we'll discuss the Route County Wildfire Mitigation Council real quick. We'll give you an update on what's happening with that group. We'll get into a little bit of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. I know you've heard some of that from a few weeks back. But we'll talk a little bit more about that. And I think you probably saw the funding request letter from the county. So I can talk and answer questions about what that is. And then a little bit of what we're doing within the city of Steamboat Springs and Fire Department and some of the other things along the lines of wildfire mitigation. So that's, that's really very good. So like we try to do, these are the questions we'll, we'll come around to at the end. Obviously, we'll address the requests for funding. And then really, it'll just be some time at the end for, for you back with questions from folks on the stuff we've brought up and talked about. So let's talk about the Wildfire Mitigation Council. I think you've got the general history, but really we started in around 2019 with the wildfire conference, the first wildfire conference. It involved stakeholders, really was kind of pushed with the Board of Builders and a bunch of folks saying, hey, let's all get together and talk wildfire and see if we're all doing similar stuff. So the, from that conference really led us into this idea of having a council here in the county. A lot of other counties have them and had them, had them for a while. So that led to some stakeholder meetings, the creation of the council. We, we created bylaws, we, we became 501(c)(3). And we have been chugging along ever since kind of the start of that, which was 2020. So the Chair of the Wildfire Council is a gentleman named Jeff Mirage. He, he, you know, he's a private business owner, I guess, and has been involved in many nonprofits and boards. And so he felt he would be a good position at the Chair. I am the Vice Chair of the Council. And then like Carolina Enriquez, who's with the State Forest Service, she's the Secretary. And then we have plenty of private citizens as well as HOA representatives and stakeholders throughout the whole region and industry in wildfire and forest health and watershed, everything else. So we have a lot, a lot of great people working together on the council. We've dialed into, we have on the, on the website, routewildfire.org, we actually have our objectives, goals and objectives, mission statement, which you can see up there. And we're broken up into basically four committees. But one of the first things I want to touch base on is one project we've been focusing on lately is trying to get an Executive Director for the council. We, we found enough funding. We certainly have plenty of things we want an Executive Director to do. We found enough funding to post a half-time Executive Director position. We did get some interested, we got about four interested parties, two of which we felt had enough experience and some wildfire knowledge that we extended. They made it to the final round. We extended the offer to, to one person. But the long and short of it is this, this, she took a job somewhere else. She was offered a full-time job with benefits somewhere else. And then the other person that we were interested in felt she wasn't ready to take on the task and removed her herself from the running. So we're kind of back at, okay, now what do we do? One of the things we realized was a half-time position probably isn't attractive to, to get the person to volunteer. So we're now trying to get our ducks in a row. We believe we have funding to float a full-time position with some benefits similar to what you might see for an Executive Director and some of our other nonprofits here in town. So we think we have a better, we're in a better spot to offer that up. And hopefully maybe get someone that really can help with kind of the blend between Executive Director and mitigation specialist that can really help us with getting projects going and up and running. So that's where we are with that. The other committees are very active and I'll just run through them real quick because there's a lot going on. The Education and Outreach Committee, one of their big tasks has been to dial in a good interactive landing website where people can go to get anything wildfire mitigation or wildfire. We did get some funding early on to establish this website. It just, the new version just got up and running. And so we're still dialing that in. But it's a great landing page. We have a lot of links to mitigation funding, mitigation ideas, as well as, you know, forest health, watershed health. And then our conference, which is coming up in 2022. The other task for the Outreach Committee, of course, is to community engagement and education. So we're really trying to task some of the other committees along with this to get information out to the public. Because no council, no fire department is going to take care of wildfire mitigation on our own. We really need to get the public involved as much as possible. We have an upcoming 22 conference. This will be the third conference that we've put on. This one is going to be live again. I believe every council member got an invite, however, two are going, right? Because I think if we have more than two, then we need to post it and advertise. But I know you've accepted.
I can go.
Oh.
I have to, I have to, along with you, recruit.
It's okay.
And alternate.
Right? And I forget who else accepted. Was it you?
I thought I did.
But anyway, yes, I guess we'll have to dial that in about posting it if more, if more folks are going to come from the council, which I would love if everyone, everyone from the council came. That.
What the dates, is it on the, I saw online, it's on the 30th, but on here it says the 29th.
So the 29th is the stakeholder kind of invite only afternoon, evening. And then the 30th is the public council conference. And so, so the, so I don't know if we're advertising both days because the 29th is really the, just the invite.
And is that, do you want council on one or the other?
Well, the 29th for sure. And I think that's what you got the invite for. And the 30th, we'd love to see, see there as well. In fact, the 30th is, is going to be a lot more public engagement, you know, kind of preparedness type of things and how, how, how can we all get involved? So anyway, so the conference is the 29th and 30th. It were, that kind of is a precursor to May, which is Wildfire Awareness Month. So we hope to, we hope that we can get as many stakeholders. So we expect to have Forest Service representative, BLM representatives, HOA representatives, everybody that's been involved with the council to this point would, would be invited to that. The other committee, which Julie is a co-chair of, is the Plans and Policies Committee. One of their big tasks is working on the CWPP and getting that dialed in. And, and we'll talk a little bit more about the CWPP after. But another big task of the plans and policies, and this is something that the city is getting involved in, is, is starting to look at building codes and planning use code and community development codes and recommending to municipalities, including Steamboat Springs, about how we can start to integrate wildfire mitigation concepts and ideas into those codes. There's certainly wildfire mitigation building codes out there. Todd Carr, the building director.
Yes.
I was a builder. Of, for the county, he's actively involved on the, on the, on that committee. Doug Schaefer, our Fire Marshal, is on that committee. And so, you know, starting talks now about the next implementation of the building code and how we can start incorporating those wildfire mitigation stuff. But also when it comes to watershed and water conservation and planning with that, you know, those are all things that really kind of, the process is get those ideas together through the council and then really push them out to the municipalities and see what we can, we can get incorporated. The Values at Risk Committee, which I also partake in, is really kind of focusing in on how do we protect values at risk? So we've been involved in a few of the mitigation projects that we're seeing around. Sanctuary, the city's been partnered with Mount Warner Water. We do some mitigation work around their plant coming up. We're working on an assessment and reimbursement program so where we can standardize a property assessment approach that is put out there and then different fire districts can help perform those assessments, give property owners a to-do list and say, hey, these are, this is like a honey-do list for you to, to get some property wildfire mitigation done. And then hopefully be able to back that with some mitigation or with some reimbursement so that folks can do work on their properties and then maybe being reimbursed for a certain amount. We're really close with rolling that out. In fact, we'll have our new wildfire seasonals working on the assessment program. And then another thing that we've been, we're just starting and hopefully we'll have some plans in place for next summer is we've been getting together a group involved in kind of all around Emerald Mount. So BLM, the WAPA group that works under the utility lines, parks and rec, open space, the Fire Department, the private landowners on either side, the land conservation, there's a lot of conservation land about what we can be doing on Emerald. And so I just met with Craig and Carolina yesterday and we hope to, to be able to get a grant application in for some work up there next August. Let's talk about the CWPP a little bit more. I think Mo did a great job of explaining what that CWPP is. We did, do have one that was originally from 2010. That needs to be updated. That was a county CWPP. But really, the, the idea of a CWPP is a local input, local kind of collaboration to address unique conditions and what's going on in our area. And so the value of a CWPP is, you know, when a community has one of those, you, 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 you kind of jump the line and are allowed to get a lot more funding, a lot more federal funding that can come in for some of our mitigation projects. It really does bring the community together, different entities, different areas, to create a collaborative process and prioritizing projects. Obviously, we'd be, identify some high hazard areas. And then most importantly, we'll have, like what we're really striving for is a CWPP that provides us free recommendations and a plan to implement. And that not only includes fuel reduction, but of course it includes forest health, watershed protection. And one of the big things is we, we do have, Kelly and Julie were involved in the CWPP we have for the Fish Creek Drainage and the watershed, watershed protection over there. That has some very specific recommendations in it that we would love to see implemented and would certainly be, would be identified in a county-wide CWPP that would then prioritize some of the things that we already identified in more specifics. What you see in a lot of communities is kind of an umbrella CWPP and then a lot of different HOAs, municipalities that might create their own specific for their area. From the Fire Department standpoint and from the city standpoint, we would look at what's produced from the CWPP and decide if we need another one or if we can use that information just to start implementing projects right off the bat. We have an initial committee that's trying to vet out the vendor that will help us facilitate it. Julie, myself, Mo Demora, and some folks from the State Forest Service and State Division of Fire Prevention and Control are, are on that committee. We, the RFP was put out, I think Mo went over this. We, we received two bids. One was for $60,000, which correlated exactly to the amount of grant money we were offered. So, and then the other one was $120,000. But neither of them really did what we were shooting for. And so the group has decided to rewrite it, tweak the CWPP a little bit, make it clear that there's hopefully more money available. And we're now trying to raise a target of $120,000 to get a, what we feel will be a much more robust and comprehensive CWPP. And we'll have a lot more community involvement than we were seeing from the original. And Julie has a lot of experience in those and has been a valuable resource. So any questions certainly that she could answer as well. So how can, how can we help as a city, right? I think first and foremost is we want participation from not only elected officials, but from everyone we can get in the city and the community. City staff will certainly be involved in that. But participation is key. It does, it does no good to write a plan and then just put it out there and everyone, no one knows what it says or have any participation in it. And then obviously we'll, we'll come back around to the potential of the city participating in the funding for it. So real quick, what are we doing? Where are we at currently with the city? And this is obviously specific to the Fire Department. Just as a reminder for those that might not know, everyone on the Fire Department for the city of Steamboat Springs is trained in wildfire response. We, as well as structural and emergency medical, we're cross-trained in all of that. What we do specifically with wildfire, one of the programs we've had in place for, for many years now is a deployment program. The greatest benefit of this deployment program is getting our firefighters' experience on working some large project fires, which we are seeing all over, very close to home now. But their experience on these fires is invaluable when it comes to stuff that, that might become closer to home. We have a mute, what I would consider from, from my experience, a very robust mutual aid agreements with the state, the feds and BLM and National Forest, with our neighboring fire districts, to where we have resources we've never been able to, to get in our area in such a quick manner and free of charge for at least the first operational period, the first 24 hours of a fire, and oftentimes extending it to that second 24 hours of a fire. So everybody has agreed and we have operating plans that lay all out this agreement and having cost of, of all this stuff. But everybody, including the Forest Service and all those people, it used to be hard to get their resources here. We didn't know when they show up. Now the plan is everybody says, we need to all look out for each other's back, whether it's national forest land, state land, BLM land, we need to stop fires as soon as we can. And for us, you know, we have a fairly minimal response capability for an initial attack on a wildland fire. But we get there and what's key for us is we get there as quick as we can, we size it up and we call the resources in as soon as we can. So if we have a wildfire start near a neighborhood, near our water plant, near the ski area, we're going to get there and we're going to say we need air resources immediately. We're going to get on the radio and we're going to call in the aircraft we need and we're going to try to get that fire out as soon as possible. Eight people working hand tools is not going to put it out. So we need to get out there and, and we've got those mutual aid agreements in place. And I'm certainly can go into long diatribes of all those mutual aid agreements and answer any questions, but, but it's been, it's a much more robust situation than I've ever seen before. So that includes aircraft, hand crews and command assistance, right? To bump it up, one of the things we heard from Mo was really trying to focus on a Type 4 incident management team here locally that can take it from the Steamboat Fire Response to the next level, start organizing it so that we bump it up to the state, we start having all this in place and it can be smooth transitions through all that. As you know, we started our wildfire program, I think more specifically wildfire program by the hiring of two seasonal wildfire firefighters this year. We have one hired for sure. We have an offer out to another one and we have a couple that we are, can, can fall back to if this one doesn't accept. Unfortunately, there's a lot of people hiring wildland firefighters and, you know, we're competing just like every other job in the city. As you know, we have a Type 3 Wildlander of an Interface Engine ordered. We hope to see that in July or in June, June, July. We were lucky enough to get in there, get one that was on the line and will come to us. We now are looking at two years for, for engines to, to come off and get, get in our hands. And so what we're going to really have those folks focus on, along with some of our current staff, is response, obviously, education and outreach mitigation efforts. So we want them to participate in these home assessments, helping homeowners determine what they can do on their properties. We want them working on some city properties for doing some mitigation work, discussion with Craig, our, you know, up on Emerald, Spring Creek Trail, some city-owned lands behind the high school, Spring Creek Trail, those type of things. Some of our, I forget what he calls them, social paths, social, you know, like Blue Sage Trail up to those neighborhoods, helping with mitigation efforts. So we're going to get these guys out, cut trees and doing some mitigation work as well. Where do we, where do we envision it to go? Some of this you've seen in our current strategic plan. We'll continue to update it. But what we would like to see as we grow this program is we believe we'll need a full-time coordinator. There'll probably be like a lieutenant position on the Fire Department. You can see this model, we're kind of behind Vale, for instance, which is another city municipal Fire Department. But we'll need a full-time fire, fire, wildland fire coordinator that will help us plan year round, help us apply for grants, help us plan projects like the Emerald Mountain project I was talking about, and then supervise the, the seasonal folks that we, we are able to bring on in the summertime. What we'd like to see is, is growth on the seasonal wildland firefighters until we get to a point where we have about six working on it every season. Early on, they can continue to do the mitigation work, they can manage projects. So for instance, that Emerald project would probably involve some contractors, it would involve grant management, so we'd get them involved in that. They would continue with the public education and outreach. And then they would also continue with deployment, which it brings the experience, the training and a financial gain to the city with those deployments. If we can get six folks, we can have two separate crews and we can always have a crew here working. We can have a crew deploy when the conditions are good here. We can bring them back when the conditions warrant them, they in town, and then we have two crews that are available for that, that wrap an initial attack response that we talked, that I was talking about. So I'm back to the questions. So the first question is the, kind of how council feels about the, the, the letter from the, and the request from the county. And I believe they requested $15,000 from the city to help with the CWPP. As I said, we're trying to bring that up from currently funded at $75,000 to $120,000. We believe that the wildfire council is going to be getting some more funds from the BLM. So the council is going to be contributing some of those funds. We don't know the number yet. So we don't know the, we don't know the number, the amount of money we're going to be getting from BLM, so we don't know how much we're going to be able to donate to this. The cap, this county has also reached out to the other fire districts, reached out to the other municipalities for assistance, since it is a county-wide community CWPP. So I'm happy to answer your questions on the first one.
Great, thank you Chuck. Any questions for Chuck?
How is, I'm sorry, I missed it. How is the Route County Wildfire Mitigation Council funded?
So we're funded through all sorts of means right now. Some private donations, through some organizations like Jeff Mirage's, the organization's helped fund some. We received some funding from the community assistance from the city and a lot, a large chunk from the BLM.
Okay. Does that mean, is that how you're able to try to hire a full-time employee? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how this all.
Yeah, and that is also a little bit of the cart before the horse. There's a lot of funding available for wildfire mitigation, for watershed protection, for forest health, which all falls under wildfire mitigation. There's a lot coming from the state. There's currently a lot from the state that's being funneled through the State Forest Service. There's a bunch of money that's being funneled through the Division of Fire Prevention and Control. And then there's a lot of federal funds. So what we're struggling with is having the ability to, to have someone that can find these grants, dial them in, write the grants, get the money to help fund the Executive Director.
To fund themselves, right? Okay.
So, and that was what we floated out towards that for the halftime ED was we were like, we can do halftime right now, but we really believe you could make this into a full-time position very quickly. We have plenty of work. It's the funding. So the private donations of what we believe we'll get from the BLM will help us bump up to hopefully bring them on full-time and then it'll be, it'll be a self-sustaining situation.
Chuck, do you mind taking down the slides so people can see the conversation? They want to see the group, so.
Great.
Thanks.
All right. Michael, do you have any questions?
I did. I did have a question for Chuck on that FTE and kind of like what Heather was talking about there. How soon is that something that, that you, I mean, we just hired the, you said you were full staff, but is this going to be extra? And how soon would we be looking at wanting to appropriate that? And is there any safer grant funding for that position or is that just a more of an admin?
So I'm assuming you're talking about the, the full-time coordinator I was talking about.
Yeah, you call it a, a fire, yeah, the coordinator.
Yep, yep. So the safer grant would not apply for that. We will look and I'll certainly have our grant team look to see if there's other funding opportunities for that position through the city. And that is, is not identified, that position has not been identified in the strategic plan, but I would expect it to be on our next rendition. The, the wildfire program has really been something, I think we all know, is something that's hitting us in the face and we're realizing that we need to develop sooner than later. And so, so that, that whole thing has been rapidly evolved. We've been talking about it for years, but it, it hasn't fit in very well. I believe we have a good plan in place or are able to look at some other places to add to the model.
So would the full-time person be, even though it's through grant funding, would be an employee of the city or the Fire Department?
For the council? The one that I was talking, the full-time wildland coordinator for the wildfire program for the city would be an employee of the city.
Okay, great.
I have a question that might be off-topic, but I'm concerned about fire mitigation this summer, you know, during fire season. I'm wondering if you need staff to help like enforce fire bans or I'm just thinking about Buff Pass and everybody camping out up there and what we can do to ensure.
Yeah, we, we don't need enforcement help. We could use an army for mitigation projects. Like Buff Pass is, is the jurisdiction of the National Forest. And so their rangers enforce fire bans up there. And the sheriff also goes up there and helps them. So that's, enforcement is not the Fire Department's jurisdiction. That being said, again, we, we, there's more mitigation projects than, than, you know, we know what to do with. It's all a matter of getting our heads wrapped around them, figuring out how to coordinate them. And that's really where the council, the wildfire council is, is trying to focus their efforts is saying, we're, we want to be that agency that can, if you tell us what you've got going on, we'll tell you how we can help or how we can get you help or how maybe we can get you funding. So that's where the council really wants to kind of be that hub. We feel through the website and through our outreach, we're starting to do that. We've created an HOA presentation program that I've now done three or four of them to different organizations. They're not just for HOAs, but where we talk about that coordination and how the emergency response, the other big question people have is evacuation. How will we know if we need to be evacuated? How can I be prepared to evacuate? You know, those are all things that we're, that we look to a CWPP to help us find gaps, but also we're looking at outreach to, to get out to the community. The problem with, I'll just, one of the things we hear all the time is, how come I don't know what road I'm going to evacuate on if I'm told to evacuate? And we don't know where the fire is going to be. So the plan is when an incident command system is set in place, it's up to the IC to determine, you know, okay, how are we going to get evacuated people out of here? Who should we start with? You, you know, you can't just have 10,000 people all of a sudden get on Highway 4. So, so those plans develop. That's.
And you spoke to two wildfire teams. What's your timeline on that?
Well, we have two this year. I think on the.
So you have two in place, we'll have two in place.
We will, yep. They're, they're, they'll be up and running at the end of April.
Okay.
And so then our plan is, I believe on the current strategic plan, we have two more identified in 2024, which we'll be, we'll be kind of huddling up at the Fire Department to see if we want to change those, if we want to bump that up and try to get the six, you know, by 2024. But again, it's a, it's a balancing act with every other need in the city. But that, ideally, you know, I'd hire six, six next month.
Exactly, right.
But it, but it's, it's good, as we've said many times with our hiring, it's good to ease into these, to some degree and not all of a sudden have all these people that all of a sudden have all these people that you're saying, okay, what can we do with all these people? Um, we're getting our ducks in a row with mitigation projects. I think the Emerald Mountain one will be a big one that we'll, we'll, we'll need some more help with and have, again, those seasonals be able to help us with that.
How receptive are the HOAs that you've been dealing with?
They are knocking at our door for sure, they're, we get calls all the time, um, you know, HOAs have struggles, dare I say, political struggles of their own, um, and that's what I hear a lot of is, you know, how can we get Joe, property owner over here to contribute and do this and that? So we, we try to offer them ideas and, and, um, you know, assessments. Um, we, the fire department really is focused on, on structural and, and kind of individual property assessments. When they want to get larger assessments of, of a community in public lands, that's really when we, we kind of pass them over to Carolina. And, um, what we try to do is offer them a plan that they, as a neighborhood, can see the difference and why everybody needs to be involved. Um, so they've been very receptive so far and, um, and again, that's one of the, the demand that, um, you know, we're struggling to keep up with. Um, is everybody wants, um, everybody wants, uh, to hear from us, everybody wants to, to have some help. Then we, you know, the mitigation council would love to eventually buy some equipment, some, some masticators, some, um, probably not chippers, but some equipment that we can, if, if a property owner says, I'm going to do the work that we talked about, um, I've got fifty percent of it that I can cover. We're, we're trying to figure out how we can reimburse for some and maybe have some equipment and come and say, we'll do this and this and this and that and the other thing for you. Um, and there's, again, there's, there's money out there, we just need to, we need to get someone on board to tap into it, yeah. There's a lot of money out there right now.
So, um, the mountain, um, honored Earth Day on Saturday and there were multiple tents. There's a sustainability tent, but there was also a tent, and I don't know whether it was CPW or, um, I don't know who it was, but Smokey Bear was there for education, but the pieces that were there were the sheets of paper.
Right.
With, this is what you should pack up and have ready to go, this is da, 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 da. And I'm thinking, um, whether there is a way we as a city can get information like that out quickly now, before our fire season is upon us, um, to members of our community. And how, how could we work with other organizations to ensure that members of the community understand this is what should be packed in a bag at the door right now?
Right.
Kind of deal.
And we, we, we do and will work with Mike Lane to get some of that out, um, we did some last year. Uh, the conference is a big one, um, a lot of that, um, so, so the wildfire mitigation council had a tent.
So that's who was there, yeah.
Yeah, the checklist is, is one that I, I produced, I did, I'd be able to say I create these things, but I steal them from other people. Um, but, um, the check, the, the preparedness checklist, which had contact information. And then we had, um, like the home ignition zone from the forest service and, and documents like that. And so that is a large part of what our education and outreach council is trying to figure out, is how do we get that information out there? And the big message we really need to get out there is not only the preparedness side of things, but the message that you need to help yourself, right? We just don't have, our, our staff is busy trying to run the emergency calls. We would love to get out and do a home assessment of every home in our district. We can't, and so what we're trying to do is figure out ways to, to train the trainers in HOAs. How can you help do assessments in your own HOA? Um, and get, and get out there, and so those are all messages we're, we're pushing hard and trying, trying to figure out how to get out there. But I am, we are up for ideas if, um, you know, and, and the district, our district fire board a- asks the same questions. How can we help? How can we get the message out there?
Cool.
We're trying.
No, that's great.
The, the, I'll tell you, the, the biggest hurdle, I'll just say, you know, I've heard it many times, why we need to make things easier. Everyone that's on the council has full-time jobs, right? And I, I'm amazed at how much work we are getting accomplished, um, but it's, it's, um, you know, it's, it's in conjunction with what we're doing. Uh, Frank Alphon is the chair of the values at risk, he's the manager for Mount Warner. Plenty go on, like I said, Julie's very active in plans and policies. But, um, you know, and I spend a lot of time on this as well because it's, it's a focus that needs to be, and attention to be sure.
Is there any, um, material we can put out in paper that would be pretty concise?
Um, there is, there's, there's a ton of material out there. And, and really the, the tough part is, is trying to dial into what people are looking for. And that's where really probably the best thing we can do is message, message the council's website because we have tons of links, tons of material on that. Um, continue to message Route County Alerts and the Emergency Management, um, on the, on the preparedness side. They have a ton of information on their website about, um, like the Ready Set Go, um, ready.gov, which is a preparedness website, how do I prepare my family to evacuate in a fire? What do I need to be packing? What should I be listening to? Those sort of things. The information's out there, um, uh, you know, we're going to continue to try to get that out in various media forums through, through the council. Um, I don't, the fire department doesn't have a budget for, um, marketing that as of yet. But we'll continue to use Mike Lane to, to push that stuff for sure. And you'll see a lot of it come out of the main, because it's wildfire.
All right, any more questions for Chuck? Michael, any questions?
All right, great, so are you going to be bringing up, bringing this fifteen grand ask to us to, to a future council or council?
Uh, well, you.
Well, I think we probably need to do a thumbs up or a thumbs down since it is a work session.
I asked Chuck to bring this forward, I got the letter and I said, this is the time to bring it forward, get a reading council. So, yeah, if, if you decide to do it, I would just suggest to come out of the city contingency, which is for emergencies, this is obviously an emergency plan, so would be eligible.
Yeah, if we get the thumbs up, we'll, we'll bring it back as a supplement.
Yeah, right, that's what you'd say if we give a thumbs up.
Okay, okay. I'm seeing one, two, three, four, five, six. Michael, nine in your head? All right, well, it sounds like we're all in agreement on this and, um, the more information we can get out to the public, obviously the better off for everybody in our community, right?
Great.
Yeah.
And thanks very much for, you know, bringing this up, discussing it.
Thank you.
I'm available for questions.
Thank you.
Can I make a little promo while he's still here?
Yeah.
Says I will not be in town to do the one thing that I could actually be useful for. Um, this, the Saturday portion of this, of this conference is for the general public. The more word that we can all get out to anybody, any groups that we know, it's, it's for everybody. If, if there is a wildfire, it doesn't, uh, just, uh, select a certain demographic. Everybody needs to go through the exercise of learning how to prepare for it. There'll be loads of materials up there, loads of workshops that we can help with, but mostly get the word out.
And, and a big part of Saturday is, is have everybody leave that participates with a, a basic preparedness plan. Um, we're going to have facilitators there, information.
Along the lines, uh, I'm sorry, of emergency preparedness, did you all get the invite for the executive, uh, emergency disaster considerations for executive, for executives' training course, which was August, I'm sorry, April twenty-sixth in the morning, eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. That's the date that was picked for council to hear about what's the city council's role in the event of an emergency and so forth. So if you can make that, it would be great.
Will we be able to do that virtually? Or could we see whether we have the ability to do that virtually?
I'm looking at the.
I certainly can ask Chuck.
That'd be great.
Really quick, um, I'm sure that you've partnered with Document Youth Core on some of that mitigation, some of those mitigation projects.
You know, we haven't yet, we've certainly talked about it and that's, um, but again, we don't, we haven't gotten to the point where we, we're doing any hands-on mitigation through the council yet. Um, but as we start looking at like doing work on Emerald and stuff like that, yeah, the Youth Core will be, that's, I mean, it's a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
All right, for sure.
Hundreds of volunteers lined up, but I don't know how much experience you already need for that.
Yeah, and there, we, say, we saved their building, but we saved their buildings.
Yeah.
We're very grateful, I'm willing to help out as much as we can. Yeah, that's a great, great idea, for sure.
Thank you.
Great, yeah, thanks. Chuck, thank you and your entire team.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you bet.
And next up tonight is our water conservation efforts, and Julie, welcome.
Hi, thanks. That Michelle, help me.
I'm Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
Soon as I zoom in and share, or?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, I'm waiting in here. Hi, John, we have a seat because I'd be.
I'm not presenting, Julie, you waiting, getting?
Yeah, oh, it looks like it's not even in right now. Hey. Great, hi, Julie Backs, your water resources manager. I'm here with Michelle Carr, distribution and collection manager. Yep, she's gonna, she's gonna jump in on a few slides here. And, uh, we're here to talk about water conservation, which is a subtopic under your long, short and long-term water planning goal. Uh, and so tonight we're gonna, we're gonna cover the why, why the city cares about water conservation, the benefits to us, our role in it, um, the water resiliency planning that we've done so far, um, including focusing on our twenty-twenty-one conservation plan, um, give you some background on water usage and demand. Um, and then focus on the key activities that we are doing right now and that we have identified for the future. Um, and then kind of end with a summary of our recommended, um, priorities for, for the next few years. So, why is water conservation so important to the city? Well, we are a water provider and so this helps us improve our, um, reliability of our water supplies to grow into our wa- water portfolio, um, and be able to, um, be more responsive and flexible and adaptive in, um, in busy situations, um, and just in the long-term impacts of climate change, um, and drought and wildfire. Um, protects our, protects our river health, but we can, we can divert less water from Fish Creek, leave more in- environmental flows and streams. Um, less indoor and outdoor water use means, uh, less irrigated, um, flows going into the river from irrigation. Less, less water treatment, effluent, treated, fluiding. Um, it reduces our carbon footprint, um, there's a lot of chemicals and energy that goes in treating water. Um, and it also is a way that we can, for instance, demonstrate with our regional partners and other local municipalities that we are, we are doing our part as, you know, the calls on the Yampa and a potential Colorado River Compact, um, down the road that we are, you know, that we are involved in this, um, in our regional collective. Um, and it also just helps make that connection between water conservation, sustainability and resiliency and the other community out use that we have. And so I've kind of can put the city's water conservation activities into kind of five general buckets here. Um, water resiliency planning and there are these kind of four key activity areas that we focus on. And water conservation is definitely a topic that takes a lot of, um, coordination between departments. We all have some different roles to play, which we'll talk about as we move forward. And then we also have some key partners externally, um, that we work with and, you know, the, the, we'll talk a lot about. This presentation is Mount Warner, uh, Water and Sedentation District. So obviously we, we share a water treatment plant, um, they provide water to half of our citizens. Um, so they're a key partner in all of our water conservation efforts. Um, so we have had a lot of water resiliency planning in the last few years and this was, has really been driven by the state, the Colorado Water Plan, which was adopted in twenty fifteen, and so the priorities, the goals that they have set and the funding that they've made available has really helped us to do a lot of planning. Um, they have two big, two, two big water conservation goals in the, in the Colorado Water Plan. Um, so one is just reducing the state's overall municipal industrial use. And then the other is really it's land use planning, that's integrating, um, water savings, um, concepts into land use planning. Um, and so they have a goal that seventy-five percent of citizens in Colorado are covered by a community that's done that. Um, and so I just wanted to, we've got the other plans up here that kind of are, are water resiliency framework to make sure you're aware of. Um, in twenty eighteen, we adopted the Yampa River Health Assessment and Stream Control Plan. Um, so that, um, plans for the health and resiliency of the Yampa River. We have a water supply master plan that was updated in twenty nineteen. Um, and then as Chuck you mentioned, we have the Fish Creek Critical Community Wildfire Watershed Protection Plan that was about, also adopted in twenty nineteen, um, and then we updated the water conservation plan in twenty twenty. Um, and our water conservation plan does meet, um, state statute and guidelines. It has to be updated every seven years, this is the third iteration of that plan. And you can see these are the goals set in the water conservation plans, we have a couple very quantitative goals. And then we have a list of very qualitative goals. And so on the first two, um, we will be, uh, later on this year, you're tracking, I don't have the numbers yet on where we're at on our progress towards those two targets, but we will be, um, each year, um, tracking where we're at and meeting those. And just, uh, the non-revenue, just in case, that's not a familiar term to someone, I know it wasn't to me, uh, when we started, first started working on this plan. So that is the difference between our, uh, treated water production and then our billed and metered water. So it's, it's the loss that's through the distribution system or, um, metering inaccuracies. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, and so on average right now, our annual average loss is about fourteen percent, so we're seeking to get to ten percent by twenty twenty-seven. Just to give you a little background on water, on water usage, uh, so on the left on our pie charts here, and we're showing both the city and the district, um, our types of users and so you can see residential is our, is our majority of a user type. And then, um, on the right here, we have, um, indoor versus potable outdoor water use. Um, and so outdoor, outdoor water use is about a third, both the city and the district. All right, so this graph. Okay, so EQRs are equivalent residential units. And so that is basically about two hundred, it's two hundred and eighty gallons per day of treated, treated water demand. Um, and so you can think about it as like equivalent to about the use of a three-bedroom, twenty-five-hundred-square-foot single-family house. And we, we can convert that, we can convert commercial uses or park irrigation uses, we can convert that for, into EQRs. And we use EQRs instead of like a per capita unit because of our, um, because of our seasonal population, because it, it varies so much, um, throughout the year and also because of the amount of community that goes on and so many people like work here but don't live here. And so it's a better, it tells us more to use that type of unit and use, again, lots of other communities, we use a per capita approach. Um, and so what this graph, so I see Robin's look, what this graph is telling us. So the blue, the blue bars are showing, um, our demand, each year our demands per EQR. And that dotted blue line is showing that sort of downward trend in demands per EQR. And then, uh, the gray line is showing just our overall EQRs. So that's basically showing the growth, our additional water growth, more residential goes to go to residential units, that's going up. But our demand per EQR is going down, so that's good. Um, you see in twenty twenty, it's a little bit, we have a little bit of an anomaly with the pandemic, losing out, water usage really go up. But overall, we, we have been trending downwards and that's true kind of across the state as we just have better water efficiency indoor and outdoor.
So the linear shows.
So the linear shows conservation.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It's just showing we're growing.
Right.
Got more people, but the.
But there's less water per unit.
Per unit, yeah.
Does this chart or graph and the pie chart include city usage for city parks?
Treated water. This is just city usage for treated water. And so there are already parks that are on the city water. Yeah, that would be included in there. And overall EQR calculation. Okay, so yeah, for the, for the rest of the presentation, we're gonna dive into those key activities that for those, you know, we kind of talked about the overall resiliency planning. Now, the activities that we're doing, those other kind of four buckets. And so Michelle is going to talk about the first couple. And we're gonna tell you about what we're doing right now and then activities we've identified for moving forward.
And so the first set of activities is gonna fall under the infrastructure maintenance and improvements. And under that, we have system water loss audits and leak detection. So activities that we've already been engaging in, the city has participated in the Colorado Water Loss Initiative. And that's a, that's a workshop put on by the Colorado Water Conservation Board. And that entails a very in-depth dive into your water uses and your water losses. We can't really target how we're going to best perform, what activities we need to go through for water conservation until we know exactly where our water losses are and what those are, what activities we need to target based on that. So we started doing this program in 2019. Of course, with COVID, we haven't done 2020 or 2021. So this year, we'll be taking an in and up look at the year 2020 and 2021 for water uses to do our water loss audits. And the CWCD is putting on workshops to help us make sure that we're, we're doing them correctly. And then they verify them at the end. Along with that, automatic metering infrastructure is something that the city's been doing. We installed automatic meters and transmitters. I think 2014 is when we completed that program. And that's something that allows us to see water usage in 20 minute, 20-minute increments in real-time levels. And so that helps us to better respond if there's a leak or anything like that that we can detect. The next activity is under system efficiency upgrades. And this is really where we get, I think, the probably the most juice per squeeze for water main replacement program. For instance, if you take the volume of water loss through a quarter inch diameter hole in one of our water mains, which is about the diameter of a pencil, that's enough water to fill the Old Town Hot Springs every 18 days. And then further imagine that we replace Riverside Water Main and that water main looked like swiss cheese. I can't even tell you how many quarter inch diameter or larger holes that there were in that. So replacing that is huge savings for us. And that's definitely where we wanna, we wanna get those losses is at the water main replacement program. And thankfully, we budget $1 million per year for our water main replacement program. Meter replacements is something that the city's been working on intermittently. As meters get older, they suck, the accuracy goes down and it's usually in favor of the customer or it's. So we're losing tracking water ability there. The next is city parks and irrigation systems. So we've wanted to take a better look into our irrigation at parks. And we've also had some efforts converting our parks irrigation onto raw water as opposed to treated water.
There's a player here as well, because there were other questions on that following.
Yeah. And so going forward, what we're gonna continue to work on. So the Colorado Water Loss Initiative, as we, as we continue to do that, that's gonna come up with some recommendations that we can implement and enhanced AMI, which is the automatic metering structure. There's some software that we can, we can purchase and implement that will help us better optimize the information that we're getting from our, from our AMI that will help us to detect leaks sooner and also help customers detect leaks sooner and, and also watch their water use. And this is all in addition to, we're gonna keep doing the other, the previous activities. And then under city parks and irrigations, we're gonna take a look at additional water, raw water conversions for irrigation systems, water audits, hopefully upgrading our irrigation systems to maybe smart irrigation. And this is stuff that we're looking into, we don't have fully defined yet, but. And then we'll look for opportunities throughout the city in open space for turf replacement. This next use, these next activities fall under water use policies. So under billing systems, what we're currently doing is we've been doing rate studies every three years. And that helps us to, you know, make sure that we are, we have enough revenue to fully fund our water main replacement and all of our water conservation activities that we want to keep doing. And then also helps us revisit our conservation-oriented rate structure. We implemented that, I believe, in 2011. And that was a tiered structure. So it, it encourages customers to stay within that first tier of water use to keep their bills lower. And then incrementally, as they use more water, the charge for that water continues to increase also. So that's intended to encourage water conservation. We also have been always following a structure of monthly billing, which allows a more reactive stance that you can, that customers can see, oh my gosh, I've used a lot of water, I need to track down a leak. So it improves response time to any sort of leaks. Water use regulations, we have adopted the water wasting ordinance that allows us to give fines for, for individuals or facilities that are not watering in accordance with our watering schedule. We've have adopted the stage two watering restriction schedule as our standard watering schedule. And we've enhanced enforcement by, we have the ability for citizens to report on our website if there's been water wasting and we're able to follow up with that. And we've also had an indoor appliance rebate program for some time. So we'll continue these activities. And then going forward, we hope to re-energize our indoor rebate program. I think that there's a lot of people that don't realize that we have that. And I think we need to do a better job of informing people that that's out there for them. We'd also like to look into an outdoor program, including rebates for the installation of smart irrigation systems. And then third, also look into third-party irrigation audit program. And whether or not that would be something that would be worth our, our efforts to look into.
Okay, so I'll cover the last couple categories, then one being land use planning and development. And so there's sort of three key ways that we could do a better job integrating water conservation into our land use planning. That's along long-range plans, our development codes, and then through technical assistance and incentives. And so right now, the Stevo Springs Airing Community Plan does have policies that are promoting infill and density. And so in, in general, more density is more water efficient. And so multifamily development, it is more water efficient than single-family development. And a lot of this is because of, of lot size and that, that irrigation, the outdoor irrigation component. And so policies that we have that promote density and, and infill are also policies that will help promote water conservation. And so we implemented those policies in our zoning districts. And then in development codes, and I should say, and some of these are within our development codes, within the community code, we have an adequate water supply for development policy. That's, but that is really a state requirement to have this type of policy. And so that's when we have development that's more than 50 units, they're required to do a water demand report and provide, and provide assurance that there, that there's adequate water supply to meet the demand. And then we also, we have tax fees that are by fixture and by square foot, irrigated square footage. And so there are another incentive for folks to, to do water conservation. We don't have a lot in terms of technical assistance and incentives right now. And, and so in the water conservation plan, this, this was an area that we spent some time because it is a big push from the, from the state right now, from the Colorado Water Plan. And so we can better integrate water conservation into our master plans and into the update of the, of the Stevo Springs, the Airing Community Plan. We can look to do that in a more intentional way. And then in terms of the community development code, there's kind of three key areas that we look to strengthen, review and strengthen our water conservation policies. And the kind of key one that we can start with, is probably the most bang for our buck, is the landscaping code. And so the planning department has budgeted money in 2022 to get started, to hire, to get some consultant help to look at reviewing and advising the landscaping code. And then a couple of other things that were identified in the water conservation plan and is that, is to develop low water use model landscape plan. So we could perhaps do this in conjunction with the updating landscape standard, providing some model, model plans, and then looking at how we could potentially provide some incentives on packages. And then lastly, education and outreach. So we have really great program right now, where we're partnered with Mount Warner Water and Craig Sheckman Family Foundation. And we provide money to, two-year program with the Yampa Valley Sustainable Council for a water conservation equity education and outreach program. And so last year, they did a frame barrel workshop. They did a water-wise landscaping, gardening, irrigation workshop. They also helped us really enhance our outreach, overall outreach campaign with information on, on our website, on information, infographics, in our utility bills and other social media postings. And then also right now, or actually, I don't know what year we did that. Last couple of years, you know, we did the demonstration garden at City Hall as well. And so moving forward, in the next year of that program with the YBSC, we'll be doing additional landscape or workshops and training. We're doing, working on some outreach to our high-water users, both in the city and in the district. And the water conservation has planned, identified some additional actions, including a developing a website that's shared between the city and Mount Warner Water that's really just dedicated to water conservation. And we also are interested in pursuing better water, or improving water conservation education with the K through 12, you know, practically YPDA. And we also will be working with YBSC to, to promote and communicate about other demonstration gardens around the city. And then we have, we have identified the new, the city facilities are some of the biggest water users. And so doing water audits on our facilities and looking at where we can make some upgrades. And then lastly, we would like to look into developing a customer portal for water use information. So as Michelle said, when people can get more real-time information, they can adjust their, then their, their actions. And so this would be something where they can come and see their water use information and it also potentially give them alerts when there is big changes in their water use that might mean we. So there are, we, we have been able to see from implementing past actions what works. We know that the watering schedule, we know that when we increase rates, we see water use, savings in water use, that works. And I was just, you know, looking at a survey of a lot of different water providers over this, across the state on what they think really works the west, the best. And it was, you know, it was watering schedule, is those conservation-oriented rate, rate structures as we have water main replacement programs and then monitoring and leak detection. Those are the top four things across the state. And so we know those things work well. Moving forward, the next couple of years, we want to really continue to invest in our water system upgrades in the water main replacement program, continue to expand that education program, both with city resources and with our partners, and then really keep using that water conservation plan, implementing strategies that we've identified, and then tracking our progress towards meeting those goals. And then a few key things that we recommend that we focus new initiative on is reducing the water use in parks. There are some things that we could do, we'll get a lot of bang for our buck. And there are a lot of bucks available right now through grant programs for drought, drought resiliency and water efficiency. And so we're actively looking for where we can align our needs with some of those funding sources. And then updating CDC. And we, and starting with the, starting with the land, the landscaping standards being really that first step and looking at how we can strengthen our, our development code. And then thirdly, creating that customer portal where they can, customers can look at their water needs information, be able to, to react. So that's the end of our presentation. And then our questions are your feedback on those priorities. And then other activities or actions that we may be missing or things that you'd like to learn more about in a future presentation.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Great. We'll start around the room, or does anybody have any questions for Michelle or for Julie?
I wonder if you would elaborate a little bit on when we talk about improving water use in city parks. What, what are you seeing that is the lowest hanging of fruit in, in that?
I'm gonna turn it right over to our, our parks folks.
Hi guys, how are you?
You were anticipating my question.
I apologize for the distraction, dropped my phone. Craig Robinson, Parks Open Space and Trails Manager. And tonight we have Aaron Stafford here, who is our new Parks Supervisor. I'll start and let Aaron kind of wrap up the question. I think with a lot of our systems, they're pretty dated. So they are inefficient, maybe zones that don't have good coverage. Have, you know, 20 to 30-year-old systems in some cases, we start to have mainline breaks. By the time the maintenance required to repair these is not efficient. Technology's come a long ways and we've really not been able to keep up with it due to lack of resources. So as Aaron knows, we can do water audits and I'll let you talk a little bit more about that specifically and where we can find conservation techniques to minimize use of water in parks.
Yeah, just, if I go too far, I'm a huge irrigation nerd, so just tell me to stop. So you just mentioned audits, so there's many, many firms out there that will perform irrigation audits or irrigation systems and basically give you a rating, a good irrigation system usually uniform distributions in the high 80 percentile. I can just tell by looking at ours, we're not anywhere near that. It's, it's just a result of just poor infrastructure and irrigation systems. Besides that, I mean, kind of the odds are that there, there's many other things that we can do. You know, we talked bang for our buck, smart irrigation, that was something that we're trying to encourage our community to use, something that our park systems don't even have.
And tell us what that is.
So a smart irrigation system would be mainly, it'd be a central control system. So our entire irrigation infrastructure would be on one controller. We're gonna be making adjustments day to day. So based on if, and it can even do predictive adjustments. So if it's like, hey, city's seeing those streams, I'm expecting some rain tomorrow night, I'm gonna turn your water down tonight proactively. If you don't get that rain, I'll turn it out, but I'll make up for it. And then we'll do that globally through our entire system. So that would be the biggest bang for our buck. And there's a lot of things that we need to do to get there. Our infrastructure is so dated that we wouldn't be able to just plug and play and put a new controller in a park. We'd have to do a lot of things to.
Nice one on that. Turf was brought up in, I wonder what the cost of replacing some of those parts of turf is versus like replacing the whole irrigation system?
So we, we would also need to update the irrigation system. So an interesting fact, turf grass is the highest irrigated crop in the entire United States. So converting from bluegrass to something that's low water, for instance, a fescue or something like that, that would take about 30% less water. To take out a small park and redo it, you'd be able to do that in the summer and it'd look really nice the next summer after. I think that'd be just a price point, that'd just be too difficult. But if, for the right park, it is possible.
You would sacrifice a little bit. It's not maybe as comfortable to put the blanket down, walk around barefoot on. It's gonna be a different type of grass in the field, it'll still look green, it's just gonna be a little different.
I was picturing like plastic.
Like artificial turf.
So synthetic turf has its place in park systems as well. It's becoming increasingly popular through sports programs. It is very, very expensive on the front end, but what you make up on the long term is great.
That's why we have two tar fields. A high school, middle school.
Question for Julie or Michelle. With the wastewater treatment plant improvements coming in line, coming next couple of years, have you guys considered throwing about doing gray water for irrigation for the parks? Recycling or repurposing the gray water?
I think that's something that has come up in the past. Let me just sort of have the infrastructure for it at this time. And I, and I'm not sure if that could be something that we would bet, but I think. That we would have to weigh the costs of putting in additional infrastructure to, you know, provide the gray water.
Right.
We had looked at that. Four to five years ago. And trying to be able to convert some things and it was going to cost us more to do that than to keep the systems in place that we had. That doesn't mean that going forward, it shouldn't be part of the conversation, but at that moment in time, there was no money to.
I think that was for raw water. So is there a difference between gray water and raw water?
Yeah, gray water is the water that coming out of the water treatment plant that can be purposed because they treated enough to put it back into the.
Right. Raw, raw water, which is contagious.
I have a question for you guys in the sense that I wrote in when I was reading this, when can we implement and why not, why not now? For almost all of the. Policies and. I guess improvements. The main one that I was seeing was on your land use planning and development. And the low water model landscape plans and incentive packages. To me, these are. Is there a way that you could bring back all of these things that you're showing that are going to happen in the future or that you want to do? As part of like a low hanging fruit, mid to high, and so that we can at at least. Intrinsically develop like a plan in and of ourselves to like, hey, this is going to cost us. This much or this much, just take this much time. I mean, it's either time or money or both. So in my perspective, it's like, wow, to me, this, some of this stuff seems quite low hanging. So why wouldn't we be just grasping at that fruit now and not waiting any longer?
Well, I think those three priority items are the ones that we see as like, were, were that, those are things we're actively working for, right? We either, you know, we're, we're either looking for the funding or we have the funding and we're just. Getting the staff space to get to it and get it and get it done.
I feel like you're setting us up, Gary, for the full-on, you know, smart irrigation system CIP. Happening come.
When that was going to appear in the CIP.
Well, right. I mean, I think. And that's where I'm looking. It's like, if you guys can give numbers to this or timing for some of the, you know, the policymaking, it's like, wow. This is stuff that we can adhere to and maybe put in our priority list when we do retreat, you know, mid, you know, come next month and and go, hey. Maybe we want to reevaluate where our priorities are and what our goals are and. And stuff like this that could, we, we could truly say, we want to tackle this in the. Third quarter or the fourth quarter of the year, stuff like that. I mean, I don't feel as though I'm off base with this because all of this is quite important. So.
But I also think that might go in conjunction with rethinking what our public parks look like, right? In terms of this new world in which we're entering, right? From a drought perspective, so. You know, I assume, are you guys thinking about that and? Kind of how, what, what, you know, what's the timeline for that? What's the timeline for that? I mean, is it dependent all upon funding? What, 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 what kind of guidance are you looking for from council in terms of moving in that direction?
Right. I guess I, I'd be interested to hear where you guys are in looking at pricing and things like that for upgrading irrigation. And if not. Then maybe that's the the direction that we need is to start doing that and looking at some sort of timeline. And I also think that that would be a great program to look for funding as far as water conservation funding. And we, we have a meeting this week where we are looking at. Some funding sources and, and it is, it is on our list with our Water Now Alliance Technical Assistance Grant to be. That's, that's one of the top things on that list to be looking at what funding could be matched up. Right now. And I don't, Angela may want to jump in.
Thank you. I was just about to interject before it got passed off to Craig and Aaron. Good job, team. You guys spoke very well. Um, as far as the question of have we started looking at if we use our parks differently or if we design. Begin designing them differently for different use in the future. That hasn't come up in our past master planning process. So the community hasn't identified it as a need, but staff definitely has. Versus going, I would suggest looking at a. Kind of a baby step or looking at a one park per year approach. The challenge we have with, if we replace, so if we go up. About the CIP method and we want to replace all of our irrigation systems in one year. Yes, it would be very expensive for the city, but also the impact that would have to our community would be very large. When we talk at the staff level about how to do this best, it's doing one or two parks per year and taking a gradual approach. So our community still has access to those parks over time. Um, and when we do replace irrigation systems, if we are going to replace the sod, that is the best time to do it as well. Um, and I know Aaron and Craig, they're experts at what they do. Um, we know how the community does utilize our parks. We can definitely begin picking out parks systematically and bringing them forward to council, one or two per year. In implementing those changes. Also, it is a capacity issue as well. Those are additional projects that. Do come on board to our staff and it either takes a park manager or depending on the scale of the project, Aaron or Craig to oversee it. Aaron and Craig, if you have anything else to add, go for it.
Angela's one hundred percent correct. It would be a phased approach. And you know, whether we look at the bang for your buck, a smart irrigation system and trying to get that all in the front end, the brains. And then try to get the blood pumping and all that stuff, part by part system. It definitely be a phased approach for all the reasons she said.
Well, given that it's, it's a council goal, I would. I would direct you all to go ahead and prepare. A CIP budget for as such and and spread it out, phase it out, just so we can, so council can start to see. Here's an estimated cost for this, or here's what the brains cost and.
Right.
And here's the years that you can spread it out and we'll see how it competes.
And we talk about like the highest users. Is there a highest user park that would be? Like, would you recommend starting there so we can try to conserve water as quickly as possible or? Starting with the lower impact parks that would impact the community as much?
From a water use standpoint and conservation, it obviously makes sense to start there. Um, frequently, we do find benefit. For example, Staley Park's going to have construction going through with a public works project this summer. Next summer, we'll be looking at impacts to Ski Town Park. So timing them up with those other projects as well to keep in mind, community impact makes a lot of sense as well. So I think it's a. Dance, keeping in mind the top priority of water conservation.
And I'll just add to that one. So yeah, we do have a CIP for public works replace the. They call them basically through Ski Town Park. And as that's a major project happening and it's going to impact the use. Our irrigation system, that park is close to thirty years old and we've been trying to get that passed for several years. We did an assessment of having a turf field versus having a replacement irrigation system. And with the challenges of just getting the, the basic level of the irrigation system and rehab of the fields approved. The two million dollar turf complex did not seem likely. But if that's the direction you want to go, you can let us know. Change gears quickly. I'm going to go that direction. But that, our goal, if we're going to continue down that street is that. And we will be putting the better system in that facility first off. And then we would probably look at other large complexes like Hollison Park after that, and Emerald Park, which is actually Emerald's probably next on the list because.
Great. I have a question about tax fees. Is there a way to. Increase tax fees per number of tax for the house because of. Or the units, because if, I'm thinking about footprint. And when you're building a two thousand square foot house with two bathrooms versus a ten thousand dollars, ten thousand square foot house. With eight bathrooms, you know, how do we grad, how do we? Is there a way to do a graduated tax fee so that the people that are. Making larger footprints in our community would help pay for it?
So are cap fees and capitalization does account, it does account for that because it's based on square footage.
Okay.
Of the home as well as each fixture. So every sink costs additional.
Every shower.
Bathhtub, every shower. So those larger homes and then the larger. And the square footage for indoors and outdoors is taken into account and for tapping some calculations.
I know, it's not cheap. And then.
Which is why we get complaints.
Yeah. Um, in here, um, you talked about, um, I guess what we did across the street at City Hall with the demonstration garden. Is there any way, and this to me seems to be like a little bit of the low hanging fruit. To do, whether we call it a demonstration garden, Pennsylvania area, they, they call it idea gardens. Where, you know, we could, in our parks, at the Botanic Park around town and other buildings, how do we. Work with our community to put lower. Zero escaping in or whatever. And not only just with the code, with what'll hopefully be coming forward with landscaping somewhere in the near future. But what can we just do now for this summer and then for next summer to try to start getting people not to put plants in and, you know, to water every day and things like that?
Are you thinking additionally, like to where we can do additional models at in city, city facilities and in city parks?
Yeah, just where can we do that? Because, you know, we have one. We should, you know, why don't we have ten? And PS, there are towns in our, in the country that take the roundabouts. And they zero escape them and they don't put irrigation in.
Or the medians. Oh, did I say that?
No, well, I said roundabouts, that's close enough. But there was one town in, in particular that. Made them green in order to help with the emissions. And they're getting all sorts of national and international awards. So we have the ability on our own land to do things. To help our environment. So that's the second one. And then. I had asked Gail this morning, in the climate action plan, what are the, what are reduction goals? Are we taking that into consideration in everything that we're doing?
I don't know the water reduction goals off the top of my head, but. I know that wasn't a consideration while we were, we were developing this water conservation plan update, but I don't know them offhand.
Okay. Because I can always remember Sonia looking at the one graph. You know, it's like, oh, we have more people and we're using less water. How do we always continue that downward trend with more people and less water? So that, that's so important. And landscaping is a big piece of it in the summertime.
I think that's going to be some of our longstanding group next.
Michael, do you have something?
Uh, just a couple of questions. One, you guys talked a little bit about. You mentioned this rain barrel initiative or. Are those, are those legal in Colorado? Because I thought it was, uh, that we weren't supposed to do rain barrels and capture the water, it was supposed to flow down the river.
They are legal now.
When did that change?
A couple, two or three years ago.
A while ago, yeah.
Note self, note self. Um, the other thing is. I'm getting myself a big wine barrel. When the, we have the water main breaks and we keep having those. Is it just, uh, first of all, I like the detection system that you were talking about. I think that's going to help us save a lot. Because when you mentioned the one that has looked like Swiss cheese. I'm just concerned about how much water is being wasted. Right there. And so that was encouraging that you're at least doing that. The one question that I had that I don't know if we touched on is in one of your slides, you talked about the development. The future development and stuff like that. Where are we at with Brown Ranch water potential for that? Have you looked into that from this perspective?
Ability to serve.
Yes.
So I think we are limited only by our infrastructure and currently I think the general feeling is that we're able to serve an additional eight hundred EQRs. Out west, and I believe that that's probably a conservative number. And, and limited by infrastructure. I mean, beyond that, we would need to start looking at that Elk River Water Treatment Plant.
And just grab water from Elk River. Okay. And we have those rights though, correct? We just don't have the infrastructure.
Right on the Elk and we also have a contract for storage in Steamboat Lake.
Right. Okay. So it's just a new issue of, um, infrastructure to get it to where we need it to be in development years down the road. That's already in place right now.
The, so the intake structure, I believe, is, is kind of, or the intake location. And then we have the water rights, the water storage, and then the West Area Water Tank is also meant to support that Elk River Plan.
Okay. So moving forward with this, Julie and Michelle, are you guys confident that with the Brown Ranch potentially coming on an annexation that. You're encouraged that we'll be able to have enough water for whatever we decide that comes down the pipe?
As long as it's within the eight hundred EQRs at first. And then beyond that, we would want to make sure that we're timing the construction of the Elk River Water Treatment Plant. To coincide with additional growth about that. But again, the eight hundred, I believe, is a conservative number and it could be more like a thousand EQRs.
Cool. Thank you.
Because, sure.
Yeah, so looking at the activities on the water plan. Um, a lot of them don't have these listed. Um, I know that they're in the category of, you know, until twenty twenty-four, but. I'm wondering how we're gonna. You know, choose dates for those non-dated activities.
So the ones that are after the first, it's like, isn't it the first seven years and then?
Right. But some of them will say like twenty twenty-two at the end or. There's nothing really listed for twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four.
I think we would do that through our, our annual monitoring on this plan. So we'll be doing an annual. This work session may be sort of a little bit as sort of a annual report because I don't think we, there wasn't one in twenty twenty-one. But we will be annually looking at the activities we've identified, looking at what we've accomplished. What's the next priority for the next few years, looking at tracking our progress on those goals. And so that's where we would, yeah, be looking at assigning years as, as we move forward.
Will this be updated through those reports? Like, this is what we're working on currently and this is when it's like scheduled to be. Completed or, you know, how, how do we like keep this list updated?
I know, that's it. We, usually we will take the, the matrix that's in here and then we kind of can pull it out of some document. And that becomes our working document that we can use to report to council on our, our progress and then plan strategically for what we're moving forward with.
Just kind of lead into my other question about, um, one of the activities was potentially hiring a conservation coordinator. And I wonder if that, if that's still one of the objectives. And if so, could that person, you know. Keep the actual plan updated for the community to see.
Yeah, but we have not had discussions yet internally, I think, about a water conservation coordinator since I've, since I've, I've been here. So I think it's, but it's a good idea that it's been identified, but we haven't. Progressed towards it yet.
Could that be paid for out of the utility funds?
Could be.
That'll be great.
That'd be great.
I'd support that. That's a hard one for me, you know that.
Right. Something we definitely would plan for when we do our every three-year rate studies. That would be something that we would. We identify that as something we want to be forward with.
Okay, and just a couple of quick. Activities that I thought were important that I didn't see on the presentation. Or maybe they were and I just, they were.
I might have lumped them.
Yeah, exactly. Um, reviewing the top thirty accounts, water accounts. I think is an important one that maybe we want to have our finger on the pulse of this year or next year.
Yeah. And so the city and the, and Mount Warner. Water and have been working with, um, this is Yama Valley Sustainability Council. That's actually as part of one of. One of the activities in their, their program with us. And so we have identified for both the city and the district too, that all those top water users. Are and are working on reaching out to those. And I think. You know, the district has already, actually The Grand was, is one of the top ones and they already. You may know Eddie. Uh, I believe Frank already went out and I met with them and they were looking at, and so it just. It's kind of starting the communication about. And so it just, it's kind of starting the communication about rebate programs that might be available and what could you do with your infrastructure? What could we do in an outdoor standpoint? So that, that action is, is, um, in play right now.
Is there somebody that's out there seeking grant funding for those rebates or do we kind of need that role filled?
Well, I think with the indoor and so the outdoor program is what I think we want to start studying about how, you know, is there grant funding available? How could we start moving forward with that and pay for that? Um, and the indoor program, I think is more, we just need to do a better job promoting it and getting the word out.
But we budget for a certain amount of rebates per year and that comes out of the utility budget that we gave to them.
Interesting.
Yeah. And, but we definitely, it, it's very minimal that people are taking advantage of it. So we need to do better about educating people about that.
It's like an op, I see that as an opportunity for that conservation coordinator as well to like seek those opportunities as well as educate and engage the community. Um, and then the final point I'll bring up, um, was the update in fill-in development standards to incorporate water conservation, other beneficial planning objectives, consider developing standards for green field development, encourage water conservation oriented development. Long-winded one, but, um, again, like as we look at all these future developments, this is something that even though I might not have it in place this year, I'd love to have.
Yes, yeah. I think that is definitely on the list. And again, we want to start with the, uh, the landscaping code in the CDC because there has been, uh, just in recent years, quite a bit of research on, you know, which types of land use practices and codes make the biggest difference. And while we can do some things with subdivision development, like clustering and it, the landscaping code is where we can do the most. And that's, that's where we should be starting.
Was there a code? Um, I thought I saw that in like the second portion of the seven year period, just to look at those codes that maybe were pushing it up.
I think there are enough. There might've been, it's something related to enforcement in the second part, but I think, um, actually strength, reviewing and strengthening the standards is, is identified in this first seven year period.
Okay. So, um, you wanted to get our feedback on the priorities that were identified. Does anybody else want to talk about as far as the priorities that were identified this evening to give, um, Julie and Michelle any more information to walk away with?
There's been more for me.
Okay. And then Dakota brought a few things up about activities and alternatives. Um, we're hearing about the smart irrigation plan and things like that. So like, do you feel you have some direction for us as far as just some ideas to move forward with?
One more idea that I just remembered, um, the waste or water wasting reports. Have you received any of those?
I have. Yep. And we receive them, um, and we take them for the district even and forward them on to Mount Warner when we get them. But yes, we have. That's one thing that we, um, I don't think we have a shortage of is people reporting to their neighbors.
I'm so mad.
Those definitely, those are definitely happening too.
Gary, yeah.
I said fifteen second comment. A couple of weeks ago, I spent a week in the Mojave Desert around your old stomping grounds, my goal at Palm Springs. Everywhere there were notices of water conservation were in the desert. All the faucets were trickled. And I guarantee you that week we spent there, after a couple of days, we modified our habits and you just accepted it. It was, it was really amazing how much it influenced a person. We were just surrounded by that mentality at all. So it was cool.
And I think we're fortunate. We have a great community here who's very, um, water conscious and, and so we really appreciate that. We always say good feedback, whatever we put in place restrictions and whatever for watering. So.
Not afraid to put that tag on the door when we see it.
That's cool. Well, for all you guys that came in tonight, thank you very much for being here and educating us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to move on to our fiscal sustainability and potential tax measure. And Kim Webber. Hello there. Thank you for hanging in with us this evening.
All right. Good evening. Kim Webber, Finance Director. Uh, so as you know, February eighth, staff presented, uh, several different taxing options to city council. Uh, city council narrowed it down to three options that they wanted to pursue. You wanted to pursue, um, one was an S T R, short-term rental tax, short-term rental fee, and repurposing of the two-way accommodation tax. You asked me to kind of hold off on the repurposing of the two-way accommodation tax and move forward with the S T R fee and the S T R tax. So on March eighth, I brought, um, those items back to you. You, uh, gave us preliminary directions to move forward with, uh, short-term rental fee in the form of, uh, licensing fee. That has to wait until after, uh, the ordinance is completed with their regulations. Uh, so we have that kind of on the back burner, but ready, uh, to implement that. And you also said that you wanted to move forward with the short-term rental tax on the twenty twenty two ballot, uh, bringing back the information to this meeting to establish, uh, kind of a way forward on rates and, um, what the revenue would be restricted for. So my presentation, um, is not incredibly detailed because you guys have talked about this. Uh, but we'll kind of, um, go through just cut some guidelines. So these are the questions that I put forward, uh, for you to, uh, discuss. Again, do you want to move forward with this tax? Uh, what rate would you propose to the voters? Uh, do you want it to be restricted, the revenue to be restricted? If so, what purposes? And what more do you need? Just to make sure we're all on the same page, um, you know, the who, what, when, where, uh, so the what, we're talking about an excise tax on a lodging transaction could, or less than thirty days. That would apply to, uh, potential properties that have to get a short-term rental licenses, license. Other communities have described this or, um, defined this as properties that are assessed at a residential rate. Uh, Dan and I talked about that a little. We don't really want to, wouldn't want to tie it in the ballot language to something that we can't control. We can't control what the state does on assessments. So, uh, we can control who has to get a short-term rental license. So that's the who. Uh, within the city limits of Steamboat Springs. And then if it was passed by the voters in November, uh, the effective January first of twenty twenty three. Those were the base lines. This graph I put together based on, uh, your request, but I'm not putting a whole lot of faith in, in this, um, that it will be very useful. These are the communities at the time, as of last week, that had, that I was aware of, that had a separate tax on short-term rentals, meaning that, um, properties taxes residential, um, not just an accommodation tax. It's kind of all over the board. I, I actually struggled to gather all of this information because some of the stuff published on the Northwest COG, uh, matrix was different than if I called the, the city or the municipality to get the information. So it's just kind of overall, um, what I could gather in best case scenario. So, um, Avon Crest Butte, they had, uh, Avon two percent rate. Again, this is, this is strictly an S T R tax. You asked me to get, um, the estimated amount of revenue. Some of this, they haven't, don't have a year under their belt. So that I used what they put in their ballot initiative, which everyone puts that higher because otherwise you run into tabor issues. So some of these were guesses. But it gives you, I think the goal was to get this, uh, tax revenue per listing. Um, and so you can see that it's much higher in the other areas because they have a lot fewer listings. Um, as, um, you know, the article that I sent you, that Frisco just recently passed the five percent, uh, short-term rental excise tax. Last week, they estimate one and a half million dollars of revenue, um, and that is earmarked to go to their housing authority in Southern County. So just for reference, um, because this is a tax, there doesn't have to be a nexus between, um, what it costs the community and what we use the revenue for. It just has to be used for a municipal purpose. Um, so the things that you guys have talked about is affordable attainable housing, such as incentives to move long-term rentals to, or short-term rentals to long-term rentals, uh, contributions to projects that the, uh, the housing authority has going, uh, maybe subsidizing infrastructure. Uh, you've also talked about transportation. One thing I want to note is that city employees are in the business of building attainable, affordable housing. And so just keep that in mind. You know, if we say, well, we want to build it, well, maybe city employees aren't the best ones to do that.
I need a new department.
Um, and then it can be unrestricted for just municipal purposes. Uh, it doesn't, and, and you can also break it up just like other ballot initiatives we had. If, if you want a portion of it to be for affordable attainable housing and a portion of it to be transportation. If you want it to be, you know, for the first five years, it's for affordable attainable housing and then, um, transportation after that. It's really however we want to read the ballot language. So this is a new slide and this just has come up through conversations and I just wanted to put it in there as things for you to keep in mind that are happening parallel to this discussion, that the Tourism Business Improvement District, that the Steamboat Springs Chamber is, is talking about. They're considering, um, this funding mechanism to fund destination, um, marketing and management. That was, that is potentially a sales tax on, um, the discussion has been that it would be on short-term rentals, hotels, timeshare. So a little bit different than what you've been discussing. Um, and then also just that, um, you wanted the discussion about the repurposing of the one percent accommodation tax. We're kind of having that separate, but that is taxing the same group of people. So just keeping that on the forefront. Here's the timeline. Um, we're not to the drop dead date yet, but we're getting closer. Um, July fifth is when an ordinance would need to be, um, on your agenda for first reading. So getting, um, a percentage, a, uh, restriction, non-restricted, a sunset, non-sunset. Um, that stuff narrowed down in the next meeting or so would be important to keep in mind to get this on the November ballot. So just circling back to the questions and I will turn it over to you for discussion or questions, uh, uh, Dan and I or anyone else in the room.
So, um, I just have a question. Michael's online with this.
It's okay.
That's because it's a tax issue. I just.
Right. I think last time around, um, you thought that you could participate.
Yes, I just wanted to, okay. All right, fine. All right. So, um, who wants to start with any questions for Kim? Did you have a breakdown or were you able to find the breakdown of like what the Frisco, um, tax revenue per listing would look like?
I didn't grab that. Um, I, I don't know the number.
I know it was quick, but I just didn't have it. Okay.
I didn't.
Um, we used to have a city housing fund. What was, was there a certain percentage or a certain dollar amount we would like to keep it at? It, or replenish it to when we had that fund?
It was just, we didn't have a dollar amount. It, um, I think probably the highest it got up to was maybe one point five million. I would need to look back. Um, but it was just whatever came in, in the residential leakage, uh, inclusionary zoning. And then it, it built up and then we spent it on contributions to, you have like Housing Authority for the reserves project, Anglers, and then there were some other smaller, um, projects we started on.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, you mentioned tabor and, um, kind of specifically in terms of the ballot language. Does there, so could you just elaborate on that?
Where I was mentioning that was the fact that we have to come up with a revenue estimate and we don't want to, um, underestimate that because anything we collect over that, we would need to refund back or ask, ask the voters again if we can keep it.
So again, our question for that would then be is if, if we did one percent on S T Rs and it, we believe it could potentially generate a million, will we put it on the ballot that it no three million or two million? Or what do you do in order to keep that space?
Well, you're conserving your estimates, um, you're into decreasing language. The concern is not so much that you lose a little, a little bit of revenue in the first year. There's a theory out there that is maybe being discredited, um, that it, it's going to affect your, your revenue for the entire life of the tax. I think that's the bigger concern. And there's a Douglas County decision that says maybe we don't need to worry about that. So it's not a big deal, but you do want to be careful. You know, you don't, you don't want to underestimate.
Okay. And then I have a question about, um, the, the towns surrounding us that have done something already. Do they have sunsets or do they have provisions in the language to say it's going to be two percent in Avon for the first three years and then it's going to go to four for the next three years and it's going to go to five until sunsets in ten or?
I think there was one that had a sunset, but none of them that I know of had.
A graduated.
A graduated. Do you know so many of them? I.
CAS does do this a lot.
No, I'm.
In our, it's just.
Not worthy of anything.
Yeah. And I did talk to someone from CAS that said, we're working on a really robust, uh, survey right now.
We are.
I said, that would be great, but it's not quite exciting enough for me. But, yeah.
That just came out like yesterday.
Yesterday.
They're asking for.
Yeah, asking for the information. And just, um, to elaborate on that million dollars, that is a low number. That is based on twenty twenty one and based on what we're collecting in twenty twenty two. Um, that number could be higher. I left it that, left it at that lower number because I don't know what your short-term rental restrictions are going to be. And so that will adjust that number as well. So we get a big, big number.
Could you put back up the, um, slide that you just added?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah. The Tourism Business District and then the, okay. Cause I think this is, plays a part in what we're going to talk about tonight. Um, are there more questions before we kind of get in the conversation and ask questions?
I have one more question.
Okay. Michael, any questions?
No, just we're part of the discussion. We're good.
Okay, cool. Well, do you want to start with the discussion?
Um, yeah, I just kind of, I mean, what I'm looking at in the, what I want to make sure that we do is that see how much money we're going to generate from the licensing portion of the short-term rental, which I think we had some estimated numbers, but we don't know where we're going to land on that. And how that relates to a tax. And then in comparison to getting support from the chamber in the lodging for what they're trying to accomplish. It seems like we're trying to double dip. And I'm not really, uh, I haven't heard from that portion of the group. I'm not, I mean, because they're not here or maybe they aren't in the room. But we want to find out where we're going to play together in the sandbox if they're behind this, uh, kind of legislation. Cause I'm just concerned that there's a lot coming out at the same time and what are people going to get behind is going to help something actually get forward, move forward on a tax basis.
Okay. So I'm going to ask the question to Dan and Kim then. Um, if the chamber were to go toward for a T bid, that, they have to come to us to approve the language for that, but that is not put to the general community in a vote. Could you explain who, um, who participates in determining whether a T bid is approved or not?
And when, the same thing has to be.
Well, it, it depends. So, uh, at one point there was a proposal for a T bid to include restaurants as well as hotels. And if that were to be the case, I think that the election would have to be the, all the citizens of the city. There have been discussions about a different T bid with just hotels and lodging. And, um, in that case, the electorate could just be those property owners. Um, that's what Denver did. They're sort of the example that's leading the way in Colorado. The T bid election doesn't necessarily have to be in November because the taper rule is for districts. If there are regular election days sometime other than November, and many of them have regular election days in, um, in the spring of even every year, I believe. Um, that's. That's, that's a acceptable day for Tabor. So T-bid not necessarily.
Okay, so if, if we were to decide to move forward on something and the chamber was to decide to move forward on something, they could get theirs out to their members. And that could happen whenever, you know, legally it's allowed to. Ours would be in November, no matter what.
Ours is in November.
Okay. Okay. Eddie, any comments?
We covered up.
To Michael's point and, um, how, and Heather saying, we need to talk with the chamber about their ballot language. There's going to be some sort of, yeah, tension there. How do we, how do we address that?
Well, I think we need to push forward on what we want to do and what we think the electorate wants us to do. And, and I, I think, Michael, for a point of clarification, with licensing, just to be on the same page here, licensing, we're, if, when we collect a licensing fee, those fees can only be used because of Tabor, only for, and not in exclusive or not anymore than the use for like offsetting the fees or the, the.
Cost.
Cost that we're, that, that we're, we're, we're incurring by having licensure and oversight, correct?
Those are restricted funds.
Right, so licensing is kind of its own separate beast. And we're looking at licensing to basically pay for staff to do basically the licensure and then do the.
Enforcement.
Enforcement, inspection, yada, yada, yada. It can't be used for infrastructure, housing, yada, yada, yada.
Well, I mean, the licensing aspect of the fee has to be used for those licensing purposes.
Right.
Now, it, it is possible for them to adopt a separate fee or have it, or have a part of that be, be dedicated to housing. Uh, but you have to, you have to establish that connection between the short-term rental use.
But it's easier to do the connection if we did it through a tax.
Yes, then, yes, if you do, uh, if you just tax, you don't have to make that, that link. You don't have to have that evidentiary connection between, um, the, the fee.
And that's why we went kind of the tax right route because we don't need to have to do this study and really have this finding of fact to go above and beyond.
But I can't really speak for your reasons, but yeah, that was the impression.
Okay, okay.
Well, when it comes to the percentage that we go for, do we need to have some sort of backing on that or can it be arbitrary?
Are you talking about the licensing fee or for the tax?
Yeah, I don't know, arbitrary is the word I would use. You have a great deal of distractions to, to what's on the inside.
Right, can we, can we go back to the T-bid for a minute, right? I mean, so, I, I, because that's, that's specific, specifically, right? I mean, I think as was discussed, right? It's, um, lodging, I mean, I think there's timeshares potentially, right? Short-term rental, um, and, but those will be the folks that will vote on whether or not that T-bid is adopted, right?
It then has to pass before it even, yeah.
If it's limited, if it's limited to lodging, then yes, I think that it would be acceptable to have the electorate be limited to the owners of those properties.
So this is an off topic, but you know, let's say that doesn't pass this year. Can we reallocate that accommodations tax for a T-bid? That seems to be more fitting for the.
If the T-bid were to be proposed and to fail, could we then reallocate accommodations tax money to?
Like next year?
To, to where?
To a T-bid type model or, I don't know. Or just, yeah, to the chamber.
Right, I mean, you wouldn't give the accommodations tax money to the T-bid, but it could replace the T-bid funds that, that didn't, that weren't realized through a vote.
With a vote.
Through a vote.
Yes.
It would have to go back to the community. Um, so I'm just going to stick my neck out here and say, I think, um, that I would like to move forward with the short-term rental tax. Um, I think that if the folks behind us decide to go and do something with, um, STRs, hotels and timeshares, and if they were to do something around 1%, and if we, from based on what you're giving us tonight, were to do something around 1%, I think we're in a win-win situation for everybody. We have our community who has told us through a vote that they want us to do something. And I think that we have, for me, it would be, I could say, you know, I could, I could support, help in, you know, the chamber be able to fund themselves and all the things they want to do. And I think that if we had something around 1%, which is what you're suggesting, um, it would give us the opportunity to then make a decision on, do we want to do housing? Do we want to do infrastructure? Do we want to do transportation? Do we want to do something else? Or do we want to do a combination of any of them? And I have a feeling that both would probably pass in our community.
Why do you say 1%?
Well, I like the, the million dollar number.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I think, um, we've got Jason in the room, I mean, you know, from the question of, you, you, you know, um, we've got probably a big, you know, there's going to be a lot in terms of Brown Ranch and, you know, from an infrastructure perspective and, and trying to, you know, maybe not necessarily say, this is specifically for Brown Ranch, but you know, again, in terms of looking at attainable, right? And affordable, um, housing, right? In addition to, you know, potentially the infrastructure that's going to be needed, right? To support that. Um, I also, you know, think that, um, given the discussions that we're having on child, childcare, that that would be a potential another, um, um, reason for, pardon me?
Another nexus.
Yeah, well, right.
We don't need nexus.
We don't need it. We don't need a nexus, but certainly, um, you know, we know that there's an economic.
An electable ballot.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, you know, and we know right from what we've heard that, you know, potentially, you know, depending on what happens and just with, um, what was put to us before us was there was what, $250,000 potential, you know, annual need, right? From, you know, the city. So, uh, I would support and I, um, and I think that, you know, is it a million? Um, does that give us a big enough?
No.
Well, I look at it.
No.
Yeah, but I look at it from the viewpoint, if we're going to tax STRs and say T-bid also tax STRs, then they're getting hit twice. We're not taxing hotels or timeshares, we're looking only at STRs.
Okay, but I'm looking at it going, the T-bid is something that, yes, is definitely important, but it might not be ready for this year. This is something that when we're going to strike with a ballot, we need to strike and do it once and not go, oh, wait a second, we need another percent or two in three or four years. I don't think that that's the right way to do this. And I think the initiative should be something that the community is saying, we want. And when you look at what the Housing Authority letter said to us is, they want to see it broad-based. They, they like, they support the broad stroke of infrastructure, housing and even childcare deal. I don't think, and, and if you, can you go to slide number four?
Can we say that in the ballot language? Like it's based on these ideas, but overall it's like for whatever the municipal priorities are.
Yeah, you can say what.
You could just say it's gone into the general fund and then council and.
That'll never pass.
That would happen.
It'll never pass the general fund.
No, it's, it's going to have to be somewhat specific.
It can be affordable housing to include yada, 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 right?
Well, you could say infrastructure to include water and sewer. And that could mean us fixing main breaks and that could mean us giving a million dollars to put the water line in.
And I, I think when we discussed this the last work session, I liked the direction that Gary gave us in saying that it should be affordable housing, which would include infrastructure, transportation, um, electric or electric sewer, housing and childcare. And childcare, we can put it in there.
That's smart irrigation.
So when I look at this slide and my note that I wrote is, oh God, I wrote it in eight-point font, is at 1%, we are not even close to the lowest municipality crest of view. So if you look at the tax revenue per listing, you can't look at what they're bringing in. You have to look at the tax revenue per listing, in my opinion. So if we did 4%, we'd match them. And at 6%, we'd be similar to the other communities. So I'm looking at this and going, what are the other communities doing? I don't think you can look at the tax rate or the revenue so much as what you're looking at, the revenue per listing and understanding, and that, and thank you, Kim, because I think this is very explicit on how this looks. Because you're right, depending on how many units they have, it's depending on what they're, they're getting for it. And so we fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to cut the cake, have 3,000, approximately 3,000 units. And if we're only taxing people $364 a year, is that, and we're getting a million bucks, so to speak. And i- is that enough to pay for infrastructure? For electricity, for childcare, for future housing? And in my opinion, I think that the, the community is going to say, why didn't you ask us for more?
I, I, I am on the other end of this and, and here's why. Um, what we said a long time ago, when the whole discussion started about, about short-term rentals, we all said, it's a business. It's, it's like a hotel, except that it's not paying accordingly.
Right.
So if that's, if that holds true today, and I don't see any changes, then they should be taxed like a hotel. There's a 1% accommodations tax. That brings us up, the short-term rentals under that scenario are treated exactly the same way that the hotel rooms are. And my second question is, what do we think is the purpose of, of the tax at whatever level it is? Whatever level it is, it's not going to pay for Brown Ranch.
No.
It's just going to be another stream of funding for Brown Ranch. And if we raise it to a certain level, I think it looks punitive. I don't know what that level is, by the way. But I think at some point it will look punitive, which will make some of the people who write to us all the time very happy. And it will make other people who write to us all the time very unhappy.
True.
But what it will also do is kind of put a monkey wrench in what the chamber is trying to do with, with the T-bid. Because they will lose or potentially lose the votes of all of the short-term rental votes who will be voting in that election. And the T-bid ha- has a lot of value beyond just raising money for the chamber. I would, I would hate to see us prevent the chamber from getting that launch. And we're on, we're on a really unfortunate parallel track time-wise. So they can't really sit back and see what we do. And we don't want to really sit back and see what they do. I think everything points to 1%.
Uh, well, let's go back though, and maybe some of you all have been on council before, right? I mean, in terms of the initiative behind the T-bid, right? I mean, it's really because council has said to the chamber, we want you to find a sustainable funding source, right?
We want that 700 to 900,000 dollars back.
Right, 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 exactly. So that's why they're doing it, right? Um, you know, not to, so, I mean, I guess I think it comes back to us as the decision, right? In terms of, are we willing to say, well, you know, we'll continue to fund that 700 to 900,000?
But I look at it too, though, if I'm looking at raising this more than a 1%, let's say we go four, okay? And let's say it's 4%, then you're looking at money that, if you do that broad stroke like Gary had said initially, then you're looking at stuff that we can say, okay, we're going to help build 40 with that money. And that's coming out of our seat, or out of our budget, out of like, we're going to help fund transit, which comes out of our budget, which then can offset us paying for the chamber, right? So to me, it is kind of a win-win for everyone. Why wouldn't we go for what I believe the taxpayer payers would support? And this is the whole community, not a smaller part of the community that we don't know will support it anyway i- with the T-bid. And from my perspective, why wouldn't we go for a larger number and go, okay, if we get this larger number, then that's coming off of our general fund monies in so many ways, if we're paying for transit and all this, this development stuff. And then we don't have such an issue with the chamber funding. A- a- and that's my opinion.
Okay, so I'm going to counter that just a little bit. Let's say we go for four and it's only on short-term rentals. That means we have left the lodging community out of it.
Right.
And the chamber will continue to come to us for money on an annual basis. Um, we just, that 4 million that we're getting in the pod here is not supposed to be taking money out of the transit pod here to put back in general fund. This is, in my mind, this is extra money that we're going to do something extra special with. It's, I, it's not, because then we might as well just, no, because then we're just telling our, our members of our community, we're just, we're, we want that 4 million and so now we can have 4 million less in transit because we now have that 4 million. It's not a wash back and forth and that's what's wrong.
Because the reality is, yes, it can. Because if you're looking at developing Brown Ranch, ultimately there's going to be transit there.
Absolutely.
How the heck is that going to get funded? Out of the general fund, correct? So if you sit there and you put on a ballot that we are going to help pay for transit, then that can be part of that funding. I mean, it, it's not, it is a direct nexus to say, you're looking at future development for affordable housing. Whether that be out west to Brown Ranch or anything internally as infill, you're going to have to ask for more transit. So that means who's going to pay for that transit? Right now, we're paying for it, but if this is $4 million, that transit's coming from us. That money is coming from us to transit, which will ultimately offset that line item for the chamber.
Robin. I think the community will just say, they'll say, no, I think they'll say, we're just going to spend the money away.
I, I know.
That's your market.
Yeah, we've.
Well, your market for transit.
There's a, well, there's a direct need, right? I mean, in terms of affordable and attainable housing. I mean, I think that we are hearing that.
Can we put a spec up on the screen?
You know, we're hearing that loud and clear. We're hearing loud and clear that there's an economic impact to us not having adequate childcare.
Us.
Not having adequate childcare services, right? As what, right, right.
I think that's a flagship.
Um, and we've got kind of, so, I mean, I, 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 I mean, I believe that there is support for the short-term rental tax to spend, fund those initiatives, right? I mean, and, you know, and maybe ultimately in terms of the affordable attainable, you know, we've got Winter Park looking at the issue of, you know, trying to, um, incent short-term rentals to turn into long-term rentals. I mean, you know, there, you know, there's a potential that if that's kind of a program works, I mean, maybe, you know, there's funding for that. Um, we, you know, and again, it kind of goes back to, we chose to go down the short-term rental tax instead of, you know, we put aside property tax again, right? Um, so, you know, it's, it's again, the ability to fund some of these things that we know that are coming down the pipe that we don't have money for.
I mean, it's, it's case in point, we could use this to help fund the Elk River Treatment Plant. I mean, that is part of affordable housing because that's going to ultimately infiltrate West Steamboat. We don't have money in our general fund budget right now for that. So if we put this as a restricted fund for affordable housing and utilize it as infrastructure, hey, here you go, we just now have an Elk River Treatment Plant. We have water, we have money going into it, which is still, guess what? The same money in the same pot that goes to the chamber. I mean, it all comes out of the same pot.
I think I hear what both of you are saying, but I kind of want to just clarify. Um, so your concern is wanting to make sure that the chamber has the opportunity to find funding?
No, that's not, that's not, that's frankly, that's not how I came to the 1%. I came to that before I sat down with the chamber and talked about what we're doing. I think in my head, it's exactly what we said we, what we said should happen. That short-term rentals should be treated by us, by the city, exactly the same way that we treat lodging in terms of taxes. I think that's, I think that's effortless to sell to the public. I think that, I think that we demonstrate that we're, we're treating everyone the same. I think it's important considering the amount of emotion that is tied up in what people imagine that we're going to do with short-term rentals or not do with them. And I, I think this, I think this is completely justifiable. There is no number that we can put on this tax that is going to pay for all of the things that we know need to be done. This is, this is just a contribution in the stream of. This is, this is just a contribution in the stream of affordable housing. However big you wanna make that stream, does it include infrastructure? Yes. Does it include transportation? We'll talk about that. Does it include childcare? We can talk about that. But ultimately, it's simple, it's saleable. We can justify it in every possible way. That's.
Are we leaving some money on the table?
Missing the mark?
Well, it.
Are we missing an opportunity that?
Sure, but that opportunity may come out of the chamber. And that's where the chamber comes in, to me.
I think that this is an easier sell than the chamber sell.
The chamber will sell, will sell to the members of the lodging community?
The general public does not vote on this for the chamber.
Yeah, but the tax, the P- but the T-bid's gonna be voted on people, by people that may or may not even reside here, where this is a valid initiative that will only be voted on by people that reside here, so.
And?
They're not gonna touch the same people.
Well, they'll touch some of the same people.
I mean, you guys are saying that lodging community, all these people, the lodging community doesn't own all of the short-term rentals.
No, we're talking about the people that own the short-term rentals, finding out that they're going to be on the same playing field for 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 tax purposes.
Well, quite a clarification.
As the lodging community.
They pay the accommodation tax today, right?
Yes, they need to collect and remit. The only way they're not on the same playing field from the um city standpoint is there's a local marketing district that is um, that really goes through Highway Forty. It's mostly the mountain area that has a two percent accommodation tax. Um, and so if you had a short-term rental anywhere outside of the local marketing district, they don't have to collect and remit that two percent. But they do currently have to collect and remit the other one percent. Your local marketing district board has been talking about potentially expanding those boundaries to make that LMD the city limits, and so then it's more of the same level playing field. But right now, they do collect and remit the one percent accommodation tax.
So if you're an STR at the mountain and you're in the LMD zone, you're you're paying that extra two percent.
You're collecting and remitting it, yes.
You're paying just two, not extra.
Well, you're, as opposed to somebody that lives downtown.
That's paying one.
Yeah, eleven point four percent at the mountain is the total tax rate. And in debt, well, on Main Street, yeah, if you're over here, it's nine point four.
I think there was discussion, right, at the, at the state legislature, but it didn't go anywhere this session, right? In terms of, I mean, that's the other issue, right, is in terms of treating an STR as a commercial entity, so that's.
Is that still alive, by the way?
No.
No, so that that was, that's the other. And it may not come back, and we we can't.
Who knows?
Yeah.
Hey, Robin?
Yeah?
Could I, I mean, it seems like the discussion and Joella brought into a little bit about the T-bid and the lodging as well, is there, is, I I know, so I see Jason in the room or Karen, is there, can we get a little bit more information and do, are we, I don't think I got the whole idea of what their T-bid is actually doing. So, in order for us, hold on, in order for us to actually evaluate whether ours is a better sale than theirs, I kinda need to know what theirs is talking about, and right now, I don't know.
See, we want to.
They're coming to us in a month.
Yeah, there's gonna be presentation in a month.
So I think, I mean, I'm glad it's a work session that we can kind of go on with that, but that's gonna be an important comparison for me.
Well, I think that isn't the fundamental question, whether or not we, as council, I mean, I mean, it's it's back to the funding aspect of, and what I see of the partnership with with the chamber, right? So I mean, to me, that's that's kind of the fundamental question.
I look at the chamber as doing their thing. They they have promised us for years that they were gonna do something. Covid hit and everybody pulled back. And now they are following through on the promise that they made to this community that they would work diligently to not have to ask the city for money moving forward. And that they are following through on their promise to do that. And I I personally would not want to hinder them in getting their own funding so that they don't have to come to us anymore. And because that gives us approximately seven to nine hundred thousand dollars more to put, whether it goes in general fund or into childcare or into housing or transportation. That's money that gets freed up in our general fund, and I would not like to, I'd like the chamber to have that opportunity to go to their members to try to get something passed. Because they're the ones that are working on it. It's a grassroots effort from them for them. And I wouldn't want to hinder that in any way, if it's at all possible. Because the flip side of that for me is, if we wanna go with a higher percent, then we have to be prepared possibly for the chamber not to be able to do it, and then we're gonna have to continue day in, you know, year in and year out to fund the chamber, and with seven hundred, this year, it's gonna be eight hundred, it's gonna be nine hundred, it's gonna be a million, right? It's just, it's not going to go away, and the money's gonna have to come out of our pod.
Yeah, because if we go with the higher combination tax, that would definitely scare the lodging. Well, we're getting double M here, so we're not gonna go on a T-bid.
Well, they wouldn't necessarily.
So can I ask you a question, Dan? Is there a way, like, I mean, isn't there, aren't there ballot initiatives that have like if-then scenarios where you can put in the ballot, like, if the T-bid passes, then it's a one percent, if it doesn't, then it's ours, I mean, can't you do something in the, with respect to, I vote for, I vote for A, I support an STR tax, period, and then ballot question B is, if one passes, then the other gets X amount. I mean, the school district does it, right?
School districts did it.
So that's where I'm questioning, like, can't we do a two-tiered question that says if that, that has an if-then statement?
And is this a situation in which both questions would be on the ballot in the same election?
Yeah.
Yes.
So we could essentially say, we want an STR tax at one percent, and then we could pass another one that says, if the T-bid fails, then it's gonna be an extra three percent or something.
Would you be willing to? Yeah.
Could you do that?
You could, um, but I think that, you know, you're running over the risk of this, of a complicated ballot measure that might not be long, you're saying.
And everybody, their.
Well, let me tell you, the school district did it with grief, and it took a lot of education to me.
But that's what I'm saying. I mean, initially, you could do ballot one A saying, do you want a one percent STR tax?
And the answer is yes.
And then the school district did a tax and a bond measure that were connected, right?
Yeah.
It was the third piece.
And there was a third piece of it, too, to um, for more money for salaries.
Right, so that's where I'm saying, like, could we not say one percent STR tax across the board? That being a standalone, and then like, uh, you know, two A would be, you know, T-bid passes or T-bid fails, then it's an extra X percent.
Would you be willing to? Um, and the.
Now, there was, there, I I would like to point out, there is a difference here. School districts were all the same uh government body, you know, that is their election.
That's true.
We'd be talking about the T-bid, which is separate government, which is separate entity from us. I mean, it's a, I think it's still directly possible, um.
I just would like to.
They did it with the Education Fund Board, too. They said, will you pass the half cent for the next ten years? And then the second question was, will you authorize them to s- support two other school districts?
Right.
So they did that.
That's what I'm thinking, like, how, could we do something like that?
One question was, will you extend it? The second question was, will you share it?
That was, that was one ballot question.
Oh.
The ballot question that allowed them to um send money to.
So there were two questions, I'm pretty sure, yeah, because they had to extend it first, and then they asked if it could be shared.
So the the answer is yes, um, but, I mean, I think you're seeing the problem as you try to.
Well, I mean, I'd like to see if it's a problem, if we can be clear. I mean, like, the bottom line is, the T-bid's not gonna be on the main ballot. It will go out in their own special election, correct?
Um, you know, that that also kind of depends. I mean, it's possible.
The only.
I'm getting a little out of my area of expertise here, but it's possible that they could do a coordinated election with the county, and it would appear on the same piece of paper as city ballot questions. Or they could run it separately. I don't, you know, I'm not entirely sure how that would go down.
I got a question for Karen. Karen, is it ready? Can I ask Karen about the T-bid? Can your feelings, what is like the threshold of the lodging community of like the tax?
Uh, thanks. Kara Soller, it's Steamboat Springs Chamber. That we've been having some of those discussions, and I would say that um similar to um what Councilwoman Wes mentioned on um the like thresholds and what emotions are coming forward in these discussions. Um, my sense of the lodging community is that pretty much everything is on pause until we know more about what um city council would like to do. No one has nailed down, like, one would be okay, or three would be okay, we would still move forward with the T-bid. Um, obviously, if higher and higher it goes, the more, the less likely that there would be any interest to, it's gonna yes, um, we're just gonna say yes to this five percent, and then also add one more for good measure. So that's where I I don't have a specific number that the Lodging Association has voted on, but I would definitely say that there is a lot of emotion around the discussion of uh various percentage points, and that's really taking precedence over our discussion on the T-bid. So.
Can I ask a question to, how many, how many people, how many, how do you determine who votes? And how many, and what what has to happen? How many people get to vote?
So our current plan right now, uh, nothing is set in stone, but would have the votes weighted on pillows. Um, that's information that we have. Um, some other communities that have put a T-bid into place use estimated contributions to the district, but we don't have that granular of information based on like individual getting down to like a one person who rents out their home individually. Uh, but we do have the pillows, so that's how the votes would be weighted. Um, and then your second question was on process.
Uh, okay, no, but how, so approximately, what are the pillows and how how?
Three thousand.
Well, no, it's, no, it's all the whole lodging community and all the timeshare.
Oh, who has that? About twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, plus the three thousand STRs.
Um, that's included.
Included in that?
Yes.
And so everybody would be sent a vote?
Correct, um.
That would could be identified?
The um, in the managing entity most often would be the the voter on behalf of the properties that they represent. Um, so it wouldn't be going to like every single property owner unless they chose to do that and they did not wanna allow the property management company to.
So if property managed company XYZ manages five hundred pillows.
They're gonna vote.
They would vote, that, they would say yes or no, and that would count for five hundred. Okay, thanks. It's a clarification.
This idea might be like completely off the table and out of the park, but I prefer to try to combine to request of our community and be really specified in how much the chamber.
Well, here's my thought. I I still think this two-tiered can work, because the reality is, if you go for more, if you say, yes, we want one percent, and you put on the ballot, if the T-bid fails, then you're gonna get more, then, hey, guess what? It's it's incentivizing them to freaking get the damn votes, right? I mean, that's the whole point of this, is to make sure the T-bid passes. So why wouldn't we do this, where we could actually even ask for a two percent and then say, hey, if 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 the T-bid doesn't pass, we're gonna ask for two more? And incentivize the T-bid people to actually vote for their one percent. I mean, I, to me, I don't see this as a far-reaching thought process to be like, hey, you're gonna get two percent or one percent, wherever we land, but we're gonna get a tack on an extra percentage if the T-bid fails. I don't see that as a hardship.
No, I I'm still, I'm still struggling back with the fundamental question that we have a workforce housing issue.
We do.
Here in our community, and what other, where are we gonna get the funding to solve this problem, right? We have not done anything yet, right?
And that's why I think it's gonna be higher.
I shouldn't say that. I should say, we've we've taken limited steps, but this is an opportunity to make a big difference. So I I I'm struggling with um why we wouldn't go forward with a percentage that will make a difference.
Well, and that's where my argument is, it's like, even if we went for two percent and then did the second tier, if it does, if T-bid doesn't pass, then go for another two percent, then, hey, guess what? In the long run, we're gonna get that four percent if it if the T-bid fails. If the T-bid passes, we're still getting two percent, which is significant comparatively.
Especially unless they confuse the voter.
Mike? Yeah, just, I mean, Dan, is there a way to make sure that we can level the playing field so that the timeshares get taxed the same short-term rental tax?
Well, one, can I? Sorry, go ahead.
Um.
No.
You, we would have to revise the tax code, the sales tax code to apply to timeshare transactions.
So this, as an excise tax, though, we can't use that as a short-term rental? Explain to me the difference.
I'm sorry, I'm not following with.
Well, if if you're, right now, timeshares are not taxed the same way as lodging. And that was one of the issues that we've had with lodging, because they always say that's why we talked about getting a timeshare tax. And so it wasn't gonna generate a ton of money the last time it came through. Now we're looking at a short-term rental tax, which is a much bigger pool of nightly rentals.
Oh, yes, so, yes.
In that pool.
We, yes, if if you, if you put an excise tax on the ballot that is broader than short-term rentals and is intended to extend to all lodging, yes, we can write it differently from the sales tax code so that it captures um timeshare transactions. And what we would be trying to track, capture is the exchange and perhaps owner transactions. The cash transactions would 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 be captured, really, no matter how we write it.
Well, it it may be, it may be something to investigate, because I know that was been one of the issue with the timeshare tax we talked about in the years past.
Yes, it, yes, it could be written to capture those those transactions.
Yeah, so I'm, yeah, Jason, maybe I'll ask you, oh, can I ask you a question? I mean, in terms of, I think there are some numbers coming out, right, in terms of what we're gonna need from an infrastructure um perspective, potentially, right, for the West End? And do you have kind of some ballpark figures?
Yeah, so the ballpark figure is probably somewhere in the two hundred million dollar range.
Entire or just admission?
For the entire development, so that would encompass, I guess, the initial, the initial indication is that that would cover the vast majority of the infrastructure, and that would also be the subsidy needed to make the entire thing affordable.
So that includes the subsidy?
That, yeah, so the cost of infrastructure in is is roughly equivalent to the amount of subsidy we need. There's a lot of variables in that. What what building types we use, how densely we build, what types of other non-residential uses we use, if there's opportunities to get other grants and things like that, but yeah. And, you know, things probably are more expensive than you're just. Um, but yeah, that's the, that's the number. So, you know, a million dollars a year is gonna take us two hundred years to get there. Um, and we're, you know, we're going after a whole bunch of different options as far as funding, but we're, we're definitely interested in seeing this as a potential option, because there is a very direct relationship between the three thousand units that are currently being used as vacation rentals that are not available for locals' housing. And not all of those are, would have been locals' housing, but a good chunk of them could have been. And so, um, you know, that's been illustrated by the fact that we leased up in twenty seventeen, the reserves, we had two hundred people. Three years later, we had four hundred people looking through, uh, looking for housing. This year, when we're leasing up Sunlight, we have eight hundred households looking for housing. So the problem's getting worse, despite the fact that we continue to be developing more and more housing.
Right, because in that same time period, you brought on how many more units?
Yeah.
Right. Thank you for the clarification.
It's uh ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Bewitching hour.
Yes, it is.
Um, is it safe to assume, for a second, to assume that council is affirmative to question number one, that you want to proceed with the tax? And if that is the case, then I would suggest we schedule another work session and get some direction in terms of what other information you'd like to see.
Sounds like we wanna move forward.
Yes.
Yeah. Michael? Michael?
Yeah, I would like to investigate more for sure and get the presentation about the T-bid.
Okay.
So we got a yes.
All right.
Awesome.
All right, so, um, I'm just going to skip down to the number four. What additional information do we all need? Or if we can come up with anything, or if we have a list of questions or ideas that we can forward to Gary? So that he can keep, do you mind being the?
Well, I mean, I'd like to see the potential of exploring a two-tiered thing and, and not making it complex. I don't think it needs to be complex. I think it can be pretty simple for even, you know, dare I say, theaters look to understand. He's my witness for, what did that say? So, I mean, I think realistically.
I'm liable to $200 million.
Right, I mean, we're looking at what you say, the crisis here is quite, quite bad. And, and from my perspective, to do the two, two-tier is not only benefiting the city and our community, which is really what we're looking at, but it's also kind of goose-ing people to vote for the T-bid as well, and I don't see that as a hardship.
It's a, it's a different, different group of voters.
Right.
On the T-bid. And I wonder how, if we walked down on the, on the street, how many people would have any idea what a T-bid is? So if we put that on the ballot, then not only are we telling people what we want to do in terms of short-term rental uh, taxes, which they were expecting, they all know what a short-term rental is. Then it becomes our job to explain to them what the T-bid is. It, it, it isn't, it isn't us, it's the Chamber, and the Chamber is.
Well, it's the Chamber's job to do that, right? I mean, they want to get this passed.
It's not their job to help us pass the STR tax.
Well, it, it is sort of, because if they don't help us pass that second question, I, I mean, if they, if they, if they get enough people to say no to it, then they don't have to, they don't have to get a 2% tax put on them if the T-bid fails, right? Or whatever that number is.
We have four council members that would like us to explore the two-tiered approach.
Yeah.
Looking for direction.
I think we should just, yes, well, wait, we have 1, 2, 3.
Don't mind like exploring it.
Right, okay.
What, what, what does exploring?
Just, is it feasible to do? Is it legal, you know, in simple language, can it be done?
Like, what, what would it look like?
I mean, I feel like we've answered that question. Yes, you can do it.
Okay, fine, then we've answered that question.
No, I'm saying, I'd like to see what it, like, uh, some sort of language or, or some language out there that would say, you know, some sort of if-then statement. I mean, I have memories of voting for three different things for school board appeal all the time.
You want, you want sample ballot?
Yeah, that would be great.
Simple.
Something, simple.
See whether it actually is simple for people to look at.
Right.
No, I didn't say simple, I said sample.
Simple, simple sample.
Simple sample ballot language.
I think it's really confusing.
I, I am not going to be able to use sample ballot.
I know you can.
And apply with taper, yeah. And with a completely different energy. That's like saying, uh, will tax more if the school ballot issue fails?
So, oh, I, maybe this is for another time, but for example, the taper question is going to have to assume shell taxes be increased by X amount, and that number will have to assume that both taxes pass. So like, you know, the people who only read the bold part at the front.
They're going to say no.
That's going to be the big number, regardless of, you know, what happens with the T-bid. So anyway, all right, I guess I, I understand what you're saying about explorer. I will bring you some ballot language and show you what I mean.
Yes, just simple.
One thing I was going to request is just how to, how do we engage and educate the public on the tax? I know there's like that timeline, but, um.
You, you don't?
We can't.
You don't, you can do it personally.
But we can't do it as a council. We can't do it as a government entity.
I just know that the STR community will probably be, you know, planning to oppose and organizing around us. How are we going to organize?
We can't.
Form a committee and file it, say, purify it.
You can individually. I mean, Scott Thor did it with the air tax. He and his buds all formed to go against the air tax, and they did a great job of getting it done that fast. You just can't do it as a, like, you can't stand up there and go, I'm a council member, listen to me. You can say, I'm Dakota McKinley, and this is what I think.
And you can pass a resolution. That's legal.
Michael, did you have your hand up?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, cool.
I like the conversation. It is getting like.
Um, is there anything else we need to, um, pass on to staff to work on, and then we'll schedule this again?
Okay. I just want to be clear. I'm trying to find a compromise where everyone wins, the community and the Chamber, where we all can find some similarities and realize that this is a need on both ends, but realizing that it's also something that our constituents definitely want to get behind.
Maybe a simpler way is just to go for the 2% and earmark some for the Chamber.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, exactly.
Rather than trying to tie it all together with their, her balls, her balls. Seems to be more simple.
And I don't like that because then the lodging industry and the timeshares are not a part of it, unless we were to change the language. And if we did that, I have a feeling we would have strong opposition. We want to get something to pass for them, we want something to pass for us.
One thing about that that I actually realized was not great was one of the goals with this tax, I think, is to de-incentivize short-term rentals. You know, we can only do so much with non-conforming and restrictions, and this is one leverage point that we can have to meet our goal. Um, and, you know, how do we incentivize and de-incentivize?
It has to pass.
Yeah, it has to pass.
It has to pass. We have to, we have to keep that, that's the, that's like the first, the first thing. And that's, that, that has, in my mind, that has to do with the number, the percentage. And, and it certainly has to do with whether we would put a, a second mission on the ballot.
I don't think that a single community that has a short-term rental tax had a slim margin passage. I think they all were pretty outlandishly.
Wasn't there like a 15%?
Yeah, you raise, you raise it 15.
Very small though.
But I don't think any of them have passed by like a 49 to 51% margin.
I'm trying to do like a survey of the community.
They've already told us about tourism, and we're getting the emails daily. All right, so we'll move forward. We get a break. Hope everybody enjoys spring break. And the community that's staying here or heading out of town, be safe, have fun. Thank you all. It's a big night tonight.
Thank you.
You guys have a great evening.
I'll be at the City Manager's Conference, Landman Springs, next few days.